Good evening. I'd like to open the sixth meeting of fiscal year 2020 of the Milton Planning Board. I am Cheryl Teguyas, the Chair.
Denny Swinson, Secretary.
Rich Beeler, Member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Kathleen O'Donnell, Member.
Forgot what it was.
Okay, our next meeting date, October 10th. And then we talked about changing the one from the 24th to the 17th since I'll be away. I think part of it was to see, we wanted to also see what our agenda, what our workload would look like, but I think we can keep that for the 17th for the time being. Okay? Minutes, we have minutes from our meeting, our last meeting on the 12th. I circulated some edits today. Sorry for the last minute.
I'm sorry, you know, I had a chance to look at them.
All right, then let's defer those to our next meeting.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is Citizen Speak. Is there anyone here who would like to address us on a matter that's not on the agenda? Yes. Welcome.
Can I go back and say something afterwards?
After about?
Under administrative.
Oh, sorry, yeah, after Citizen Speak, remind me, okay?
Hello, Planning Board. My name is Steve Gentile. I live at 85 Adams Street. I'm speaking to the matter of the Milton Village planning changes. I wrote a letter relating to Monday's hearing, and I'll just read it, and then I have a few questions. I think my writing style is a little hyperbolic and bombastic, but I'll go for it anyways. In the interest of time, I will not reference the state websites for 40R and MAPC housing policies, but the proposed zoning changes that are being presented to the Planning Board appear to have been dictated directly from Beacon Hill policy to a startling degree. In addition to these generic chapter and verse references handed down from the state to the town, the state government coincidentally seeks to abolish the time-ordered municipal tradition of supermajority votes on zoning matters at town meeting to simple majority. This is intended to facilitate the larger regional efforts for economic development. This is being pushed for approval by Thanksgiving of 2019, approximately two months from today. The current mandates from above expedite economic interest to override the cautions built into the supermajority that relate to the complexity of property rights. The state-level mobilization to grow the economy is very organized and is impressive. It appears the municipal function has been minimized in its primary local responsibility has become, the town has become an active participant in this development reform. Unfortunately, the regional transformation that is intended to be imposed does not protect historic properties or existing working-class families in Milton. An expansion of the current economic boon would allow employees of the new large corporations to commute to the city from the suburbs on the T. Coincidentally, ongoing ailments to T will be remedied by an $18 billion investment from the state. This reveals the strenuous commitment to economic development by public-private partnership. Complaints to the MPIC that we had gone through before of local traffic and parking that were once promised to the integrated comprehensive solution seem to have been deferred to another committee. The Hendry site remains and reposes in a state of ambiguous limbo that swift hat-house languishes in disrepair, and the Boston commuter cut-through traffic problems get more treacherous weekly. After these specific requests by alarmed residents, these specific requests by alarmed residents remain unresolved with no clear path forward, at least at this time. Looking ahead to what is proposed, the Milton Planning Board will be placing Milton Village residents in the awkward position of needing to defend their stewardship of historic properties. Under tremendous pressure from real estate developers, this zoning agony has endured for two years now, robbing residents of peace of mind and reducing the quality of life with sleepless nights contemplating an insecure future. The MPIC proposal presented to the Planning Board is basically an MAPC-generated document. This process, by example, will set the priorities of the Planning Board decisions in the future. It sets a tone for how the Planning Board will respond to the neighborhoods that are vulnerable to outside influences. By accepting external zoning consultation, the Planning Board seems to reduce its own authority on issues close to home. For example, MPIC working groups reveal that the most people value the quaint character of the village as a priority. Build-out studies reveal that the consequences of the MAPC wording will be radical and far-reaching to the village neighborhood. When this draft zoning is reviewed and publicly debated, the next chapter in Milton's village evolution should be homegrown, reflecting widely-held community values from the perspective of the neighborhood level. As a reminder, Milton Village is the home of the Suffolk Resolves. These type of debates are not new to the neighborhood. The Resolve set forth grievances that outside forces were dominating basic issues relating to quality of life. It set forth a strategy to achieve greater local autonomy and individual freedom for colonies. Milton has great neighborhoods with passionate, involved citizens. Proceeding further with the MAPC-determined agenda will set an uncertain precedent where regional influences deprive residents of basic securities associated with homeownership and determining the character of their own place. Thank you for your careful consideration of the MAPC/MPIC zoning proposals and its impact on our unique historic context. Your ongoing devotion to public service and local government is most appreciated. So, I came across a quote today that says, it's from Confucius, it says, "The man who asks a question is a fool for a minute; the man who does not is a fool for life." So I'll ask a few questions. Monday's presentation was impressive. It was intimidating for the residents of our neighborhood, which is not good. The freedom for open dialogue at that point, as I understand it, was shut down. The freedom was a primary concern of my letter that I just read. The questions, which need not be answered tonight, that I have include: What was the software used for the renderings? Who drafted the renderings? How much time was expended? How many hours were used? Is this being treated as a donation? Do donations need to be approved by the Select Board? Were deCam qualification for designer selection considered in this process? Were the regulations of 268 Sections 2 and 3 taken into consideration? And I just received a letter from the Planning Board regarding Milton Yacht Club, and it indicates a conflict between the yacht club and the Planning Board where, I think the Commodore wrote describing some property of the docks that was...
You said it's a letter from the Planning Board?
From the attorney.
Got a letter from the town because of the Chapter 91.
Oh, yeah, not from us.
Oh, okay.
But should we be familiar with it?
I would think so.
Okay, I would like to be familiar with it.
I would think so because it involves a...
I am, but it didn't, it wasn't a Planning Board issue.
If it's a Chapter 91, it wouldn't be...
It's a Select Board issue.
It's a Select Board issue, okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, then I'm mistaken.
Okay, so it's with the war.
I just found that it, I found out, I think my concern is, you know, I don't want to get into technicalities here, but the concept was, it's a neighborhood going against the town. And then the Commodore, which is an established neighborhood, kind of quaint, family-oriented type place, he expressed his concern about the ownership of the dock, and we got a letter, the yacht club got a letter, lawyer's letter, saying, "You're done. You know, we're right, you're wrong." And I was just thinking...
We don't know anything about it.
It's really not a matter...
I can make it available to you.
But see, it's not even under our, it's not under our purview.
There's nothing we can...
I think he's trying to say that he feels like this is happening to his neighborhood, and he feels like things are happening to his neighborhood.
Well, I wouldn't expect anything different in this process.
Yeah.
That's how the town treats neighborhoods.
That's how the other board treats them.
You know, we don't know anything about it.
I'll send you the letter and just refer.
The only reason he was given the letter is he signed the letter from the yacht club. So everybody that signed the letter from the yacht club to the town and DEP, they sent it to the town, which they sent it to DEP, which sent it back to the town. We responded because we had to for Chapter 91 purposes. We also had to send copies of our response to each person that signed the letter. You signed the letter, you got a copy of our response. That was it. It had to come in a certified letter because that's a requirement of Chapter 91.
All right, so what I'm going to ask you to do is to suggest what it is about that process that you think could be better in our process, but not ask us to weigh in on what's happened with that because it belongs to the Select Board, and it needs to go, your concerns should go to the Select Board, but because we need to stick with what our charge is as a Planning Board, which, as you rightly talked about in most of your comments, has to do with the zoning, and so if what you would like to say is that you want to make sure whatever process is different, I'm not sure what about that process...
I just think we've been participating in neighborhood discussions with the town, and the town responds with a lawyer letter.
So, okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you for that part. All right.
So it's not a question then, it's a comment?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment, I don't think I've ever had anybody come up with such thoughtful, laminated pages of comments. I was very impressed just with that and your very thoughtful commentary, and I really appreciate, clearly you spent a lot of time on that, and civic involvement is the best way, the more, in my opinion, I'm speaking for myself, the more involved the neighborhood can be in the public process of any zoning article, I think the zoning gets better. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
So I hope to see you at future meetings, and please bring your neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Hello.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Steve Gentile, 85 Adams.
Oh, good, okay, okay.
Anyone else would like to speak at Citizen Speak?
Members of the Planning Board, thank you for the opportunity. I am Paulus Arana. I live in 85 Adams Street. I'm a resident of Milton Village. I live in Edmund J. Baker House, built in 1765. Edmund J. Baker was the Milton Postmaster from 1839 to 1844, and housed the post office in this home during that time. The town later rented the lower rooms of this house in 1870 for the town's first library. And it's a privilege, or it's a truly privilege and honor to be the steward of this historic house. This overlay project has been a great stress to me. I found about this, the whole thing, by accident back in 2017. When I attend to MPIC meeting, there was a PowerPoint slide which shows, my house was And I wasn't shocked. I was thinking someone was going to take away my house, or pressure me to let it go of my house. After the end of the meeting, I was introduced to the shared person, and I asked about the aggressive approach, and the answer was that nobody's going to take away my house unless yourself. I understand nobody can take away my house, or has taken my piece. All this lack of communication and lack of transparency is taking away my peace and the right to enjoy my house in peace. All this started, when all this started, I was never brought into this as a stakeholder. I am a stakeholder. If the farmers' market is a stakeholder and was invited to provide input, why wasn't I? I live there 365 days a year, farmers' market is there once a week, once a week, summertime. I have been harassed by realtors asking if I want to sell. This put tremendous pressure on me, and I'm not at peace. As a matter of fact, I have given up my vacation to attend a friend's wedding at the Black Sea this weekend, just to be here tonight. That shows how important this matter is to me. This is a great example how this disrupted my life. I'm a newly-American citizen, or a foreign American citizen, and I'm a first-time homeowner, and I don't envision myself going anywhere. Density and traffic, all of these will bring chaos to the Milton Village. No matter what construction takes, excuse me, takes place, I worry for potential damage to my 250, 40-year-old home with diggers three feet of my kitchen window and inches from my living room. I am in a difficult position no matter what happened with the overlay, but I want to reduce the potential harm to my historic house. Some lots are perfect for this type of overlay project, but another village, it will ruin our homes or peace. We have the right to live liberty and pursue our happiness, and I'm not giving away the American dream. Planning Board, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak at Citizen Speak? Okay, seeing none. Bill, you wanted to come back to administrative items?
Please. If we go back to those dates for a second?
October 10th and 17th?
Yeah. On October 8th, we have the Fire Station and Butters meeting.
So last night...
Four o'clock, and that's...
Last night, this wasn't clear, I think, to us before, but last night, the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee said to the Select Board that a four o'clock meeting on the 8th of October was intended for the Planning Board and for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, as well as other boards and committees and staff. We weren't asked if four o'clock on October 8th was a date that we could make it. A lot of boards and committees are concerned that four o'clock is not a good time. So, this is something, I think, initially, the thought was that staff was going to that meeting and providing input. So, my sense is that the Board might like to have another opportunity at a time that might be more convenient to review the progress of the Fire Station Building Committee with respect to the fire station plan for this town center. Is that what you wanted to say?
Putting it out there, that is one of the times that they have right now for, they're calling it the Butters meeting.
Okay. Well, I have a meeting in Newburyport at 7:00, which requires me to leave here at 4:00 to get there by 7:00.
Is it October 8th at 4:00 PM?
The other is, there's another, there's a corridor study meeting for Route 138, October 22nd, at Fuller Village. That's put on by Mass Department of Transportation. 6:30 at Fuller Village.
What is the location of the other meeting?
Which one?
The 4:00 PM Butters meeting?
I believe it's right here.
Oh, okay, this room?
This room.
Okay.
The Butters, oh...
If it changes, I will send it to the Board.
It's Town Center at Butters?
I'm sorry?
It's Town Center at Butters, I'm just trying to get...
Yes.
Okay. I'll try to make that...
Whose meeting is that?
The Fire's fire.
Oh, all right.
Anything else, Bill?
On the October 10th meeting, 7:15, we have the zoning. I'm going to get it wrong.
The public hearing?
Three articles, four articles, whichever, there's two zoning and one general bylaw. And then at 7:30 is the public hearing for the rules and regs changes. Both of those are in the newspaper this week, next week, for the hearing on the 10th.
Okay.
I gave you the legal ad for the zoning articles.
And what are the rules and regs, they have, do they have an advertising requirement?
They do, they're in there.
And they're in there.
Okay, what time is it?
7:30.
7:30, okay.
The associate member is, one, it's a zoning article, two, it's a general bylaw.
Okay.
So it's in there for...
So does that mean the Select Board has to co-sponsor it for the general bylaw part, or is it just us?
I put it in as submitted by the Select, by the Planning Board, sorry.
By the Planning Board, okay.
They choose to, as they, they have to now accept it, they won't accept it until...
Did you just invite me?
October 8th, that's the next meeting, although they did have a meeting last night, and I know this was on their agenda.
Okay. All right. That's it then, Bill?
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, we're going to move on to new business, the discussion of the condo conversion of large older homes with the His...
I just wanted to ask, would it be better if we would do the village overlay first? Because I think we have more people here for that topic, so that we can...
Well, how many are here for that?
How many are here for condo?
I did hear that the Chair of the Historic Commission was planning to stay for that portion, only that portion of our meeting, and then leave. And so he's here...
It's a brief presentation.
Oh, okay, okay.
He's here for that, so I'd like to move to that part of the new agenda, our new business item on the agenda. So, thank you, Stephen.
That was weird.
Here to the rest of your commission members for your work on this.
Thank you. Steve O'Donnell, Historical Commission. Bill asked me a while ago, does the Historical Commission have a list of historic houses? No. But I would try to put something together, and he indicated the purpose of the inquiry. And my first question was, well, what are the parameters? How big is the house? How big is the lot? How old is the house? Does it have to be, what is your definition of historic? Well, I made some arbitrary decisions, and I obtained from the Assessors' Office a list of all of the residences in Milton built in 1930 or before. Arbitrarily 1930, it was the beginning of the Depression that led into the war and post-war building, and I figured there wouldn't have been that many large homes built in that era. So I started with that, and then I looked at lot size, and then I looked at square footage of the houses. And what you have in front of you is a very rough breakdown. The first category is houses on two acres or more, indicating the size of the residence. Now, some of our residences go up as high as 12,000 square feet, only a couple between 10 and 12,000 feet. So there are, as you can see, 19 over 7,000, and then I started to break it down because I have no idea where you might establish a floor, and unless you know what's there, you don't know what you're leaving out or including. I didn't do anything below 3,000 square feet. And one of the reasons I went as low as 3,000 is, if the Planning Board is going to be talking about condoizing large homes, and 3,000 isn't particularly large, but if it's a 3,000-square-foot home on two acres, or on an acre and a half, you're begging for an additional building. The other question is, would this bylaw be written strictly to try to prevent the demolition of older large homes? Or would there be a secondary element of, well, who might be interested in buying these condos? Could it be a downsized situation? Could it be a young, first-time buyer who might be able to afford a condo in a large home where he might not be able to afford even a more average single-family home on a freestanding lot? So I went down as far as 3,000 feet, and you can see what's involved at each lot size. There are more between, more in lots between one and two acres than there are in lots above two acres. And then keeping in mind that Milton's builder's acre is 40,000 feet, which is about .92 acres. And by the way, the Assessors' records all give the land area in terms of acres, percentage of an acre, .2 acres, .4 acres. So just for the sake of argument, would the bylaw be interested in anything below a full acre but above the .9? You have those at the bottom, and as you can see, there aren't very many of them, really. So I mean, you're talking 153 houses. If you take out that bottom 18, you're down to 135. And I have no idea how you, what you will want to do when you get working on it, how you're going to want to compartmentalize or identify what you'd like to condo and write a bylaw to accomplish that. I mean, it's very complex, but at least I thought if you had some sort of an idea of the sizes of houses on sizes of lots, it might give some sort of direction.
So Stephen, just one of the thoughts behind this was that there aren't very many tools to address saving historic properties. I mean, obviously, one that's, that could be considered as a district, a historic district, but you've also started looking into that, I think, in Milton Village a year or two ago, and asked the Select Board to appoint, which is part of the state process, a committee that would begin to look at that, right?
Study committee, right.
Has a committee, a study committee been formed, by the way?
Nope.
Okay. So that's one tool, right?
That is a tool, definitely.
But, and the demolition delay is somewhat of a tool, it just delays it, right?
It's somewhat of a tool, but, you know, unfortunately, developers often have the attitude, "We'll wait."
Right, we'll wait it out, right?
You know, just wait it out, and we're very fortunate in having the two-year delay, which might discourage a developer from just waiting it out. Nine months or a year, oh, that ties right in with our financing plans. So it is an advantage. But, you know, I think of some of the largest state homes in, for example, Jamaica Plain, Long Island Jamaica Way, that have been converted to condos. Jerusalem Road and Cohasset, those, some of those buildings were apartments back in the 1960s, because I lived in one of them when I was first married in the 70s. My wife lived there when I met her, a little Garrett apartment on the top floor. It was terrific, and those are all condos today. I don't, personally, I don't see any negative impact in those neighborhoods. Certainly, you don't want to take a single-family neighborhood and turn it into a two-family neighborhood, or houses with three condo units, you don't want to do that. But, I mean, which is why, as I was doing this, I was kind of getting in my mind away from the smaller square footages and going to the larger. The principle, in my mind, the principal reason would be to try to preserve the house. A lot of these houses have been owned by the same families for years, they need morgemization, they need updating, and you have a two-acre capital of land on which you could buy two houses. You're looking at somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars just for the land. I mean, we see lots being sold in the 800,000 range. So if a developer could go in there and convert an eight- or nine-thousand-square-foot house into two or three units and leave the land undisturbed, I think, as you said at one of the meetings, you're subdividing the building, not the property.
Right.
Which certainly would enhance the character of the town.
I mean, in a way, it's like the same objective as a cluster development, right?
Yes.
Where you're keeping the open space, and you're putting more units in a smaller area, which is the same idea.
Right.
But in this case, the idea, I think, that we had with this was that it could help protect historic properties. Rather than see something like we mentioned, and I think you probably have mentioned before too, is the old Milton Women's Club, that could have been a candidate for conversion to condos, but instead was torn down to put in the single-family subdivision. And so you lose part of the history, and you lose part of the character when that sort of thing happens. And so that was the thing that we thought, that this kind of bylaw could help a couple of things, preserving the character, preserving some of that open space, and it actually is more environmentally beneficial, too, not to tear down something that's not a difficult thing to renovate.
Absolutely. And I refer back to one of the addresses that was mentioned before, which is 120 Central Avenue, which, bottom line, was sold as a single-family house, but for a long while in that discussion, the alternative was simply to divide that lot, put a second house in front of that house, which would have destroyed the ambiance of that particular site. The other thing that you can run into with some of these large older homes is what I might call an untraditional family who buys it and occupies it. It's not a real, well, call it what you want, it's an untraditional family, and we've got a couple of those already in town, and is this enhancing the neighborhood? I mean, somebody said to me, "Oh, you're just going to infringe upon a single-family neighborhood." That's not that simple, because a technically illegal use of the house, which is very difficult to enforce, an untraditional family, isn't doing the neighborhood any good either. And certainly, the house has, the house is standing, and the house has been preserved, but you're not doing anything for the neighborhood. So I would hope that this is, it gives you some sort of an idea where... So I would hope that this is, it gives you some sort of an idea where you're going in terms of numbers of houses that might be involved.
So would you be supportive, I don't know if your commission has talked about this, but would you be supportive of the Planning Board looking into this further as a useful tool?
Oh, I think absolutely. We have not discussed it.
Okay.
But I think we definitely would, because again, it's another tool for preservation. And not only of the building, but the ambiance of the area. I mean, all the discussions we had about Walcott, the open spaces, the vistas, the views from the street, that's, we consider that as part of our job. Maybe it's not.
Well, I mean, there's so many scenic roads, and you're right. I mean, so the idea is that, and when I was thinking about it, I went to Preservation Massachusetts Conference on Friday, but I was focusing on the climate change part of that discussion. But the idea, because in our condo conversion bylaw, it says like it has to be 10 acres, not less than 10 acres. So that doesn't allow any flexibility. And so if we wanted to start to have this discussion about taking a look at what we already have on the books and adjusting it to make it more usable, this information is really useful. Because as Denny said, you know, you really, and April and all of us have said, we want to sort of understand what the impact might be.
Well, that's right. I mean, you're talking 500 houses or you're talking 75 houses?
Exactly.
And, you know, again, depending on how you end up with the parameters, that's kind of defining what, you know, what you're going to get.
And I think you're right about putting your minimum threshold at 3,000. I mean, maybe that we wouldn't even be up from that, but you're absolutely right. I wouldn't have thought of anything lower than that.
No, and I mean, if I gave you five, you'd say, well, what happens if we go to four? So I gave it to you.
Thank you for that.
It's very helpful.
It is.
And you know, the other thing, if you're really, going back to one of the elements that was discussed at the meeting the other day, is this could increase the tax base as you create two, three units in a large, single-family home. So kind of secondarily, there's a benefit to the town that way as well.
Well, I know the Housing Committee, which Melinda Collins chairs, they're working on an update to the Housing Production Plan. And I think this is a topic that they're looking at as well, because it can help address some affordability concerns, as well as the type of housing stock. As you said, maybe it's someone who does, who no longer wants to have a large house on their own, or maybe it's someone who's just starting out and starting in a condo.
And this throws it back at you, well, you have this 8,000 square-foot house. How many condos can you put in it? Do you want 8,000-foot condos or three?
Yeah, right.
You know, so, I mean, yes, the smaller units are great, but now if you're putting too many units, it's...
Well, yeah. In a larger house, it's an existing building, it's going to be dictated quite a bit by that existing layout, right? And because you have to fire-separate them, you have to have your egress stairs. So, you know, if you're going to do so much work to get those extra units, maybe it's not worth it.
It may not be.
But, you know, if it's one per floor, you know, that's certainly the one on Central Ave. I walked through that, I think with the Zoning Board of Appeal when they were looking at it, just to see. And certainly, that one, for example, would have been an easy one, because it had two stairs and you could easily subdivide it, it would be easy to divide horizontally. And so you could see easily that that could have converted to two without a lot of change to the interior.
Well, yeah, I mean, all the ones, you know, as long as, there's Jamaica Way, as you pointed out. I mean, those, I represented, I don't know how many people buying into those over the years. But those started out as single-family houses and you end up, you know, it's the servants' quarters or upstairs or the old basement, you know, the old boiler room in the basement, you know, all that sort of stuff, becomes part of a condo.
Well, yeah, I mean, I walked through a property on Brushell Road that was, I think, on two acres or less several years back, and the top floor was all where the servants had lived. And that whole top floor was huge in and of itself. Not, the other two floors were huge, too. You know, I think, I was thinking about that myself, as a single-family home was just kind of mind-boggling. But it was a different era when they built that. But those properties still have a lot of historic value. And having another opportunity to live on rather than be torn down, I think, is what would be the goal, right? Okay, great, well, thanks.
Can I just make a quick comment? I just want to say thank you. I hadn't had a whole lot of interaction with the Historic Commission before I started on the Planning Board, and I've called you a couple times, and your members have been in here, and you're always so thoughtful in your comments and your feedback, and I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
If we can do anything else along, out of this process, let us know.
Well, yeah.
Oh, I'll call you.
I think, you know, one of us or whatever would go to a meeting and talk about it. And to sort of, because as I said, we're really in the beginning stages of sort of saying this.
That's one reason why the commission, a couple of the members knew I was doing this, but we haven't discussed it.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think that's something we could work on together as a way to get something improved in this, to allow for some more flexibility. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I do want to, because, is there anyone here who's interested in the topic of the East Milton? All right. Then to Denny's suggestion, I think from here, we'll go to the Milton Village and then we can come back to East Milton. Though I don't think we need a lot of time on East Milton, because we're going to discuss Judy Barrett's proposal. And that's pretty much the topic of that discussion. All right, so on the Milton Village, I know most of you were able to attend. April, I don't know if you had a chance to...
I did not.
Okay.
But I did just hear at Glover Open House that it was an excellent meeting, so several people stopped me.
Okay, well, that's nice to hear.
Yes.
All right, so, and you watched it?
Oh, man.
All right. I always, like last night, tried to watch the Select Board, and then I spoke to Sean. I said, the acoustics and the Council on Aging, it's tough to watch those on TV and hear things properly. But thank you to whoever did watch it and hopefully can provide some other comment. So there's a lot that's, as you saw, there's a long process that's gone into it. So the Master Plan Implementation Committee has asked this board to take it up. So the first question is, does this board want to take up this zoning for discussion and for consideration? So, or if there's questions related to why the board wants to do, or the, why the committee asked the board to do that, I can take those, since I'm cheering both. So, any thoughts? Kathleen, we can go around the table and have everyone do this?
Well, I went to the presentation and I thought it was really great. I thought it was really well-done. And as I said, the takeaway for me was realizing what can already be built there as a right? You know, the existing zoning and what that would permit, something a lot less attractive than what we could do with an overlay district. And so I think that, I didn't understand that and I'm not so sure that that message had been given before, about the fact that under the existing zoning, you can build, you know...
Is it five-stories commercial?
Yeah, big, yeah, big, fat, ugly thing right on the street. Yeah. So, I mean, not that there seems to be anybody asking to do that, right this red hot second.
Well, that's the thing, because of the parking restrictions, they never will.
I'm not so sure. It's the parking restrictions. I think that we don't have that kind of market where somebody wants to build, you drive around and look at office space, you know, all over the place, and it's all going, you know, it's all going for lease. The demand for office space isn't particularly, you know, hefty. Nobody's building it really, unless you're in the Seaport District. And even then, they're turning some of that into housing, because they can't lease it. So, you know, so that was a really interesting view from me to see what is now allowed as a right. So, concern about the historic character of the village. I did, years ago, I did the title to the Chocolate Factory, back to 16 something or other.
That must have been simple.
Oh, my God. And the licenses, you know, because we were all looking at the, so, you know, it's, we appreciate that. And so I thought that if there was a way, you know, in this overlay district to sort of protect the historic character while making, so making sure that a big block of building can't be popped in someplace is a useful, useful defense. It's something we should consider.
So I wasn't, I don't know if I'm next. I wasn't at the meeting, and I apologize, I had my children that night. But I'm in favor of mixed-use zoning just in general. And I'd really like to hear what people have to say, and I will watch the meeting. I'm sorry I didn't have a chance. I think there's an opportunity to add housing here, upper-story housing, as I do in East Milton Square. And I think we have an obligation to explore those opportunities wherever we can add housing units, given our 40B pressures. So that's just my two cents on that theory anyways.
Okay. Denny?
So, I'm most concerned about assemblage and pressure placed on the homeowners of the little houses on High Street, kind of like we heard from our citizens speak. Those are historic houses, and we have very few small houses like that in Milton. And if these homeowners get pressured out of there, then they can't live in Milton. They basically, so I, so we, part of the master plan is, you know, to have varied housing stock, and that is one place where we do have it. So I'm just looking for protective language for the houses on High Street. And I have questions and questions and questions, so, and comments and things I want to talk about. So, but, you know, those are some of the broad strokes. And I also, there was like a broad question that I had that I would love to discuss is, part of your presentation, you showed three properties, and you said, these are the three properties. So then I thought, well, maybe it would be nice for us to focus on the zoning on those three properties as opposed to doing the whole area, if we don't think that those other five-story buildings have any risk. Because why would you knock down a five-story building to put up a four-story building?
Well, the problem is that you worry about spot zoning when you narrow your zoning to such an, like, three lots or something.
But the other thing is, the analysis was really to see those sites were chosen because they probably had redevelopment potential. But the hope for the ones that were not included, like the Verizon Building, like the Masonic Building, like the one at One Elliott, is just to give them another opportunity to do something with the upper floors if they can't lease it out for commercial use, that they can convert it to residential. And that's why we kept, the committee decided to keep the overlay applying to those, to give them another opportunity. Because we've heard from the owner of the Masonic that it's difficult to rent the top floor. And in part, these buildings are a little difficult because they're not handicapped accessible. So if you have a business that's open to the public, it's supposed to be accessible. You're obligated, under the Americans with Disabilities Act, to provide public accommodation if you provide a public service, if you will. So let's say you're an attorney.
Yeah.
You have to have a person who needs an elevator or needs an access, you have to provide accommodation. So they're limited in who they can rent the commercial floors to without putting money into it. And so it gives an opportunity, actually, to, it's to help preserve, and when, in the presentation, I talked about how the Baker Chocolate Factory buildings, what allowed them to be renovated is you can use historic tax credits. I didn't really get into that part of it on the financing side. But you're allowed to do that because they're historic designated district, and those tax credits help make the conversion a possibility to residential. They probably wouldn't have made it as a complete conversion as a commercial use, because they sat there vacant for decades.
Yeah.
So it is a historic preservation tool that's been used a lot, is to allow housing in mill buildings. Now, not all of these are mill buildings, but they are, it doesn't have to be a mill building to be a residential conversion. So that's why, Denny, on the top, those existing buildings, didn't really get into the analysis aspect of it, because our expectation was that it wouldn't change square-footage-wise. What would change is how many square feet for commercials would flip to residential.
And then, again, the Verizon Building, I mean, that's always been a question about how long that's going to be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, some of it is, you know, like, Bill told me, and I don't know, Bill, where you got this information, but like the Citizens Kiosk Site is one that we thought, well, you know, and everyone, I think, would think that that could be better-performing site, right?
Yeah, I agree.
But Citizens Bank bought that to prevent another bank from going in, if I understand that correctly from Bill. So it was just a, you know, a competitive, you know, a sort of anti-competitive play, but it impacts our, you know, small commercial district there to have that.
It's that and their parking that's required for the bank.
Right. So is that property owner interested in mixed use?
It's Citizens, is the owner.
Who knows?
At this point...
So, but, so that's a, just a question, because a lot, if we go through all this zoning and then it doesn't get used...
Well, you think about the fact that you went through all that discussion of the special permit at Two Adams Street. How many hearings did you have on that?
Wait, what's Two Adams?
The South Storage? You know, yeah, the residential building that was supposed to be on the storage.
In front of South Storage, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that predated us.
Yeah, I know.
I think that was before us. It predated this particular board, but it was a planning board that did go through a lot of effort.
Forever, and nothing happened with that. So you can't, just because you create the zone, it doesn't mean it's done.
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm just asking the question. I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying, what, are we going to go down this path or, and let...
So I'm just trying to catch up with Cheryl, because she's been working on this for two years. I'm happy to answer, you know, and I'm not, believe me, I said to Stephen when we were waiting for the meeting to start, I said, I feel like I really know this district after the last four years. So I, and I'm happy to answer all questions about it and take the time we need to talk about it. So there, and, you know, we can use the slides that I have before to run through some of that. But the thought is, if you put a tool in place, when there is a change that's about to happen, so if Verizon all of a sudden changes things, or if Citizens, if banks change their real estate, that they're not doing it that way, then the tool's there, instead of somebody buying it and deciding a parking garage near the T is a great thing, which they can do as a right in the commercial district right now. So, you know, there's, there are things, we know that, you know, a car dealership could go in there as a right right now. A gas station could go back in there. So what would we rather see there if we put an overlay over it? We're telling buyers, we're telling sellers, here's what the town would rather see there than what our underlying zoning allows. So that's some of the thinking behind that. So I, I mean, I could go, I could walk out with you for hours, but I, so I have...
We'll just answer asking the question right now about whether we want to consider it.
So I'm happy to talk about it and so on and so forth. I do want the public to be involved in that conversation. We clearly have a lot of catching up to do with the public.
Can I weigh in?
Yes.
And amend my response, because I didn't respond correctly. The one thing I will say is, I definitely think that this is something that should be before the Planning Board. If it's before, you know, I think that the Master Plan Committee did a great job and put in tons of effort bringing it to this point. But I think that if there's going to be any discussion about whether or not we pursue this zoning, the discussion should happen here, for sure.
Well, it's, so the Master Plan Implementation Committee's done with this topic, this work. And so it would be the Planning Board who would take it up next. So the request has been for the Planning Board to take it up. So first, before we get into all the details, I guess, you know, and there's good questions Stephen to talk about, you know, before we decide that. But I just wanted to get a sense if people were supportive of, you know, because then we need to outline our kind of plan about it, how we want to, what we think we need to do. I think part of it is to get everybody caught up from, you know, the work that's been done. And then talk about Kathleen's look at language, you know, we can talk about other concerns, are there other things we can do? Sightwalk.
That'd be good, yeah.
Like I said, I've done a walking, a sightwalk with the Historical Commission. We talked about various conditions. We, there's a lot, so there's a lot to it and there's a lot to understand.
Yeah. And I mean, I think whenever anybody's proposing zoning, we, again, have an obligation to explore it, or who knows how it's going to turn out. But if a committee suggests it, or an individual or whomever, I think we should at least consider it. So, yeah.
I mean, and you'll remember that Planning Board did support the use of funds for the engagement of consultants. In fact, even at some recommendation from the Planning Board to consider the MAPC to do the planning consulting portion of the work. Beta Group did the traffic portion of it. And between the two of them, I think we probably expended, going from memory, maybe $60,000 altogether? Is that right?
Right.
Maybe 50? I mean, we can get the number. But it's an investment, I guess is what I want to say, that the town, supported by the Planning Board and the Select Board, with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, made the investment to continue. It was done in stages and phases, you know, so MAPC was hired twice, Beta was hired twice. So each step, that support and funding was requested and approved, right? So, all right.
Rich has to weigh in.
Rich has to weigh in.
Yeah. Yeah, so to answer the question, I mean, yeah, I think I'm, so I went to it and I thought it was great. I have the same response or similar to what Kathy said, that I was surprised at what you could do by right. I'm generally have been, over the last couple of years, a fan of the idea of the overlay. last couple of years, a fan of the idea of the overlay. Idea, just because I think there's other parts of the town that folks probably wish they had done it before developers come and want to build something. And so, I like the idea of what we're talking about. Obviously, can't wait to hear what neighbors have to say, and how it can get refined and made better, or even to move forward.
I will say that there's several property owners who have, through Bill, have made us aware that they've been waiting to see what happens with this zoning--
Glad they're waiting.
--before they decide to do something with their property.
Most don't.
So, I know people have been asking, you know, what might be of interest or driving, but there are definitely at least three property owners--
Well, so, in my opinion--
--who are interested in this.
Then it's an opportunity for the neighbors to help craft the plan, aside from a developer coming in and saying, "This is the plan."
Right.
So.
All right. So, it sounds like there's consensus, we should take it up? Okay.
Four and a half, four and a half people. One is on the fence.
There's a half person.
He's on the fence. But I've got four definite's.
Definite what's?
Want to do something?
Want to do work with this zone.
Some may have sold before now, some have been waiting.
Is one the funeral home that's released?
You don't really want me to talk about their business.
Oh, okay.
All right. So, what do, what do folks think is a good way to go about the discussion? Denny, you said you have a lot of questions. April hasn't had a chance to see the presentation yet. Do you think it's worth us going through just kind of a bit of the language, sort of what the purpose is? The analysis and the presentation that I gave had, was the history, the background, the summary of what MAPC's work was, the summary of the traffic consultant's work. And then, based on input that the committee received, there were no funds left available for any consultants to do work. So the committee did work to try and address concerns about scale, and to test what could fit if you, if we modified some things in that zoning, and if we could make the design standard stronger, so that the design solutions would help protect against something out of scale next to a single-family residential, something out of scale on High Street. So what's allowed in the proposed overlay is less height than what's allowed under the underlying zoning. And that was all in response to concerns about scale. The other thing I want to mention, just quickly about, if you didn't, the part about when I was, the traffic part, in rereading the reports to prepare for the presentation, was the level of increase of traffic that commercial generates over residential with first-floor commercial, and especially medical office. Office is six times more traffic generated--
Yeah.
And medical office is eight times more. So if we're looking at trying to have some redevelopment that has a lesser impact on the traffic conditions, it's actually the residential with the first-floor commercial over commercial use.
And is that a retail use on that first floor, or it doesn't specify--
Just a commercial use.
Just generally?
Restaurant would have, you know, is usually, is treated separately anyway, and would be under the standard process. It would have to be looked at, you know, for a restaurant, but--
So after, and I know we can't talk about, I wouldn't know anyway who the people are that are interested, but knowing now that there would be people actually thinking they want to do something, I'd imagine, I mean, I think most developers kind of build similar things, and they have a thing that they do. And so, maybe they have some ideas. What I'm now worried about is, are we going to go this way? And then they're just going to say, "Hey, that was not what my plan is, so I'm going to ignore your plan, your overlay," anyway?
Well, we had, we, the committee had one developer we invited to come speak to us, and he does mixed-use overlay, hasn't worked in Milton, he's done work in Concord, and I'm forgetting his name at the moment.
It's happening now, right? We say, "Hey, let's do this here," and then--
Roberts did.
Roberts came in too, but he has property--
Not economically, but he'll do something else.
Well, I mean, I guess the problem is, yeah, I mean, they would jump in before we went to town meeting with the zoning, you think?
They don't technically have to. I mean, we could do an overlay, right, and say, "This is what we're thinking for this area, this is what the new rules are." But somebody could come in and say, "I want to put a 40B there." And I'm not going to listen to your overlay.
Well, yeah, we can't--
If we can ever add anything.
We can't--
But, yeah, but I guess--
They can do any list.
But here's the thing, here's the thing I can say to you--
Yeah.
--is that I have defended towns--
Yeah.
--on 40B applications, basing my defense on the master plan, overlay, the designation, and I have won in two of those cases. Because we said, we have already planned for affordable housing.
Okay.
We have planned for this, we have approved it, we have an overlay district that allows it, and we designed for it. And so, you developer just can't come in and blow that out of the water.
No, I think that's great. Actually, that's really helpful.
So it's two cases that we won on that basis--
That's helpful.
To say, "We've allowed for this."
Yeah.
So, so no developer, you cannot come in and do that.
But just to throw in, like, so I guess, that's really helpful. But then I would also say, though, is, but, what, like, we go down this road and we say this, but if we, somebody knew what they were thinking, maybe we could accommodate for it along the way, instead of not hearing anything and hoping for the best. You know what I'm saying? Like, are we worried at all about somebody, "Well, if you just did this, because this is what I was thinking"? And then we just waste it 10 months.
Well, I mean, it said that you get the, you get an overlay district. I mean, you could, you could. I mean, I'm not saying we would, but--
Right, right.
When you, if you want to go down that path, you've got something there that shows what you'd like, and the design standards that you'd like to impose. And so, it's harder for a developer to jump--
Okay.
You know, to sort of blow that out of the water. Because, you know, the town has voted, you know, has expressed, and by a majority, supermajority, that that's what we want to see in this area.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I mean, developers, you know, they want to make money, they don't want to go to lawsuits, you know.
Well, and generally--
Would they go business or overlay? Would they have both options, or would the business option be gone?
The underlying zoning?
The underlying zoning.
Yes.
So they could still go business?
Right.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to know if anybody was concerned with it, because we see it elsewhere.
So, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind if there was a landowner that was thinking about pursuing a project, not necessarily selling a property--
Right.
--to pursue somebody else.
It might be worth having them tell us.
Maybe they'd be interested in telling us what their thoughts are, that's great. But I think to Kathleen's point, I think we should really start thinking about zoning for housing in places where it makes sense, for that very reason, of creating some sort of defense against 40B, because today we have none.
Sure.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And then you're saying, then you're not putting it, you know, off of, you know, Hemingway Drive.
Oh, no, I totally agree with the idea. That's why I say I'm generally a fan of this plan.
Because you can say, "Listen, we've designed for this."
Right.
"We allow for this."
And I love the idea that it's in existing building stock. I mean, I think the Masonic Hall is a, could be beautiful upper-story housing. I mean, I don't know if there's a market for it, I don't know what the construction is of that building, but it would be stunning. So, I mean, I would like to see us pursue more, you know, using existing building stock for higher and better use, or adding on, you know, I think of East Milton, put a second story on some of those single-story commercial buildings, and put as of right housing up there. I think people would build it.
Right.
And that would create a higher-value retail on the first floor. So I, I just think it makes a lot of sense. And I, I'm not saying I'm endorsing this plan immediately, because I'm just scanning through the zoning right now. But I think the theory makes sense, and I think it's certainly worth pursuing. But I would, if there was a landowner that's watching tonight and wants to come share ideas with us, that would be great.
So Mike Roberts has come to the committee, he did come to the committee a few times, and--
That's the Hat?
Yes, he owns the Swift Hat Shop and the property right behind it, the white building. He, I haven't heard from him recently, but he has come and he's talked about numbers and economics. There is a developer who, was at the meeting on Monday, who spoke, and then he came, he asked if there'd been economic analysis, and I said, "We'd love for someone to do it," and he said he would, take a look and do some, a pencil, you know, back-of-the-napkin analysis, in terms of, you know, whether the economics might make sense. Because that's always a question, is, you know, we can do a lot of planning, but if, if what we're allowing doesn't make economic sense, then people won't use it.
And I think a good example of that is the Parkway mixed-use project, which we zoned for, and I think didn't meet with market demand.
Right.
And now, from what I hear, there's a 40B being proposed.
That's what I was thinking in my mind, when I was talking.
So, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought you were, yeah, I was picking up what you were putting down there.
Yeah. A lot of work was done on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And--
And I know people are disappointed. Who knows whether or not the, I don't know what the status of the affordable project is, but, which could be nice, too.
And that's why, when the, when we looked at the concern about scale, we, we looked at mass and volume and architecture, because we felt as if MAPC had already reduced what the allowable amount that you could build, down to a level, if you went below that, it might jeopardize the economic of making it work. Because one of the things is that, with that topographic change that's there, it makes the construction more expensive, because you're building retaining walls, et cetera. And if you're building parking that's within that, then you're really building structured parking, which is great to have the cars, like, not in just big parking lots with asphalt, which, if you look at the, I forget the address, but there's the building that's right on the corner of Canton and High, and it's got the law office and a big parking lot in front.
Seventeen.
And down high, a little further, is a medical or dental office with a big parking lot in front. And then down further on High, on the other side, you've got parking that you, you basically maneuver, you pull in, and you're backing out into the street. There's a lot of pavement, there's a lot of asphalt that fronts onto High Street, actually. And if you can build these where you can use the topographic change to your advantage, then you have all your parking, you know, buried underneath the ground. And you're looking at landscape, hopefully. The views are phenomenal, so you can, I mean, people, I think, would be able to find a way to, to take advantage of the open space better than having it be asphalt.
Can I ask a question about the work Beta did? So I'm assuming that they analyzed what traffic would look like under a full-build scenario under this pilot? Did they do that?
Yeah, first they did the existing, and then they made their recommendations on the existing, and then they built off of that. So the, I guess, to no one surprised who lives in the area, that the, the traffic conditions, at the time 88 Wharf was permitted, even before it was recommended, to put a traffic light at the intersection of Adams, Canton, and Randolph. It wasn't done. Traffic engineer says, "You want to improve conditions, put the light in," like was recommended before. Then, in addition to that, with the build-out analysis, the scenarios, the commercial is a lot, is a lot bigger impact, right? So I focused in the presentation on the mixed use. And with that, they recommended, well, actually, let me back up, the existing condition also, the intersection across the river in Dorchester.
Yeah, the timing is off.
The timing of that is impacting traffic in Milton. And so I know Milton has reached out to Boston about addressing that. So that's something, that's a larger picture.
That's significant.
Yeah. So those are already, and Bill, even, is there some effort already on that traffic signal?
Yes.
Can you give us some update on that?
Yep.
Because maybe neighbors would like to hear that.
In 1946, the state told the town that we should have a light--
1946?
On Adams, Randolph, and Canton. In 1999, the town did a townwide traffic study and came back that we should put a light at Adams, Canton, and Randolph. In 2001, the town got a P-WED grant, a Public Works Economic Development Grant. And one of the things was to redo that intersection and put lights in it. When it went out for bid and went to get built, the neighborhood came back and said, "No, no, no, no light." The neighborhood got what they wanted, they got a reconfigured intersection, but no light. And they took the pipes out of the ground, so that they couldn't be snuck in at a later time. We now look at it again, we have another traffic study done, the traffic study comes back and said, "It meets all the warrants, you should put a light in." The town has taken, and we are, we've been given permission to go and start the design on that light. Now the problem will be, find the money. It's a--
I was just going to say, with the existing P-WED that you got a million years ago? Is that going to fund design?
That one's gone.
Oh, okay, that's what I figured.
Gone. The project, they redid the intersection, and they redid the sidewalks coming down. They redid the sidewalks just on Adams Street and the intersection there. We are looking at designing it ourself, but we'll have to go out for, we would put it in through the tip, but I'm not sure we're going to get tip money to do it. But it's over $200,000 for that light.
For the installation of the new light, or just for the design?
No, just for the light.
Seems low.
May be able to do the, I think we actually have the light out for design through engineering. I'm not sure where it is. I know we have the light on Adams and Squanton out for design too.
Okay.
Capitol Planning Committee hasn't started meeting for this fiscal year yet, but I'll share an update if I hear--
Okay, great.
--through that process.
Great. So then, with the build-out analysis, that's where I gave that stat. If you look at the report, you'll see the numbers in there in a chart. And if you just, it doesn't, they don't put the analysis the way I framed it, because I looked at it, and I was thinking, wow, that's, you know, but when they did their, the engineer did his presentation, it was really clear. And unfortunately, I don't think it was recorded. But if we, if we want to have him come back and anybody ask him questions, I'm sure we could get him to come into a meeting.
So I guess my point was that full-build construction of this, does he feel as though the impacts could be mitigated?
Yes. So what he said was, none of the signal, none of the intersections would change, they call it level, right?
Level of service.
Yeah, level of service, yeah. Some queues would get longer. But he also recommended, one of the things that's impacting the traffic, is that if you push the signal to be a pedestrian at the intersection of Elliott, it stops everything.
Yeah.
So they would change, yeah, for a long time.
I did that yesterday.
And when I go in Milton Sporting Spa, I just run when I can, because--
After hitting the button, I was like, maybe I should have just taken my chances. I feel bad now, everybody's late to work.
But that's one thing that he commented on, and what, I'm forgetting the other thing.
That light is mistimed anyways, because of the width of Elliott Street.
Oh, the southbound.
If we take, if we take the island--
Oh, right.
Between the bank and the gym, and we widen the island--
That's--
We can make it one--
You can get partway across.
Yeah. We now have a safety zone, and the light doesn't have to be as long. That light is that long, because it is so far across.
Sounds like a mile and a half. And that, that as an expense is not a big expense.
The engineering department is doing that right now, they're working on that.
Right, yes.
Other than lights now--
So, even if the zoning doesn't go through, traffic improvements are on their way.
Good.
Okay? I mean, at least with the things that the engineers recommend.
Right. One of the things that the neighbors wanted was, "Don't block the box."
Right.
So the traffic commission has already voted on, "Don't block the box." And the, the DPW went out and put, they put the markings in the street, they put the signs up, "Don't block the box."
There was that need.
What's the box?
Yeah.
You know, you know how people pull into an intersection, and, you know, so what happens is that the other cars, the light changes, and you're stuck in the intersection.
Oh, I see, yes.
New York City has it all over the place, "Don't block the box."
$400 bucks to, in New York City, $150 if you block the street.
So the thing is--
City of Boston, $150 bucks.
We heard from residents of 88 Wharf, that coming out of Wharf Street to Adams was challenging, and--
If you're going to left, for sure.
So they also talked about removing the two parking spaces to the left--
October 2nd.
So that's happening, too. So all of the things that have been discussed in traffic are in the works. The last thing that, I had a brain fog on, was the addition of a southbound right turn lane at the Adams and Randolph intersection. So that was another recommendation.
Which way is south?
Heading towards East Milton.
Towards East Milton.
Heading towards East Milton, yeah. So--
So can I clarify something you said earlier?
Sure.
So, what I'm just hearing is that if the build-out is 123 to 156 new units, that's only going to slow the traffic queues, it's not going to impact traffic, other than slowing the queues, is that what you're saying?
That's what he's saying.
That's the traffic--
Beta's, in Beta's report. So, I mean, the reports, there's a lot to go through.
And those are online, right?
Yes. So just, the initial report on the existing was done in June of last year, And then the build-out was November, which is this. And then there's a slide deck from the presentation that the engineer did that, that's there. Um, so you can, you know how the reports that we get for projects, you'll find all of that in the... And he also did a parking analysis as part of this. Um, and found that, uh, public parking spaces, so that's the on-street and the, the lot that the town owns, there's, um, there's a hundred and two public parking spaces with a sixty-six percent use rate, I think is the way he described it as. Uh, the only place that he felt there wasn't adequate turnover because people were over-parking was on High Street. And High Street residents reported that. Um, so there's been, I mean, enforcement, it's one thing. I don't know, there could be other things to talk about how that could be improved there, but...
Are there limits, parking limits on High Street? I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, I think it's two hours.
Two hours.
Like the other parks.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of parks, but we don't have a, they didn't hire somebody to do that, did they?
Yes, they did.
Oh, they did, yeah.
They did. So, please be careful where you park.
I'm, I'm glad they hired them.
You will get a ticket.
Good.
So there was some thought, I, I think he said it was the five-hour duration. So they went out, they picked a day, a weekday, uh, it's in the report which day it was, and they, they observed all day. And, and, uh, and that's how they did their, and it's explained how they did their parking analysis in there. Okay, so, uh...
So I, I would like to move forward, but I would love to have the neighborhood and interested citizens more active, so we could have meetings, but allow them time to, to speak before and during, so that we can start to address some of their concerns. I would feel much better, you know, I, I think a couple of really good concerns were raised today.
Um, I, I do want to make a comment about, um, notation about transparency. There was not one meeting that was pub- not publicly advertised. Every, uh, meeting was in a public place. And every meeting, in fact, the committee members told me that I was quite generous with allowing, um, people to participate in the conversation throughout our discussions. And so, um, I actually think the committee would, would feel that the concern about lack of transparency is, um, is of concern to the committee.
Okay, I, I just want to say I appreciate that, and I'd like to continue to have the public involved. Because I think, I think it, you will end up with an easier process when you get to town meeting floor. And I think you end up with better zoning when the, when the public is really involved.
And you, I think I noted that the, um, we received MAPC's report in June of two thousand and eighteen. And we have brought it to this, uh, board in September of two thousand and nineteen. And during that time, in December of last year, we had meetings, small working group meetings, because a big meeting can be difficult for some people, zoning can be complicated to work through what these tools are that are in zoning that control what, how much you can build and where you can build it. We did small working groups, Lauren organized, people signed up, so that could be ten people at max, sitting around a table, demonstrating and talking about how those tools work. Um, so there's, um, the, I do think, I, I would like for us to all at least understand it and make sure that people who see it understand it first. Before, um, just having general comments about it because of the background and work that's already gone into it. Um, so I think running through, um, the language itself and then running through the, um, analysis. Because, um, for example, terms like FAR, floor area ratio, you know, lot coverage, things like that, uh, that some of us are more familiar with using than others, and members of the public even less so. It's useful to understand how those control the scale and density. Um, and how that, well, these build-out analyses were, were done to test it. So MAPC did a test of their work, and I did a lot, to answer Steve's question, I did a lot of the testing myself as a volunteer, because we had no additional funds. Uh, and we had no additional technical expertise on our committee to do it. Um, I tested it out based on my understanding of the zoning, and I can run through that, too. Uh, and it's all public on the town's website, and anybody can do their own tests if they have the desire to do that. So, um, let me see, just in terms of, um, the software, I think, was one of the other questions about it. Um, the software, the, um, the base map was provided by MAPC. There's online tools, um, including a software, or an online software program called CAD Mapper. And CAD Mapper provides you with, um, a base building model, which gives you the topographic lay of the land and locations of buildings. There's a tool that I have access to through the engineering department, and it's called pictometry. And pictometry allows you to determine, uh, like, on the website, the width, the dimensions, so width of buildings and heights of buildings. So the three-D model, the heights of those buildings were based off of the pictometry tool that, um, that, that website afforded. Because otherwise, you need a survey, you have to pay a civil, you have to pay a surveyor to do in order to go out and get the heights and the topography. The topography is based off of, and so the two or three websites that I was able to use, I checked against the topography against all three of them. And so that was also our GIS. Alan Bishop provided me with topographic plans, which gives the heights, the topography.
Those, those come from, uh, those are trussed off of USGS, Mass GIS, and the town's own flyover.
And then the modeling, uh, I did in SketchUp. And AutoCAD for the plans.
So it was volunteer time?
Yes.
A lot of it.
A lot of it, there's many hours of volunteer time.
So the, um, some of the economic analysis Dick Burke and Bill worked on in terms of, and they spoke to our assessor, right, Bill?
Yep. Assessor and the treasurer.
Assessor and the treasurer, right. And rest of it came from consultant reports, I believe. Oh, historical commission provided us with, um, historic information.
For that, um, financial assessment, did, did you look into the, um, you know, the, the costs of the town? Either infrastructure changes, or any, like, anything?
Well, there's really, um, it's already obviously an area that's served by water, sewer, um, you know, the other utilities.
Yeah, you're not looking at laying in new utilities and new roads, they're, they're all there.
Everything's there for...
Septic systems and...
Nothing's, so if you put in three, if you develop those three new structures, let's say, they just took off, you wouldn't have to change any...
You'll update them just the way you would your house. You put a new addition on your house, you may have to update your plumbing.
It wouldn't affect the infrastructure of the area.
You might have to do more stormwater, such a, you know, I mean, you know, many of the things that...
Developer would have to do it.
When you look on Google Earth, you know, and you see, you know, that area, I mean, there's a ton of paving. And so, you know, somebody building something with new rules and regulations on that sort of stuff would maybe have to address a storm drain, but, uh, for the most part.
There's nothing to be...
Yeah, I mean, the, the developer would have to, if there was a new service size needed to be put in, the developer would be required to do it. And we, uh, the question came up with the meeting, the, um, the question about what, you know, what the demand might be, um, you know, really depends a little bit. If it's rental, you know, the demand is likely to be, um, you know, for smaller units. Um, I spoke to, uh, one of the owners of the Sullivan Company, so one of the Sullivan family members about their property on Milton Hill House. And she said that the older building is mostly older folks, let's call them empty nesters, like myself, who, uh, downsized and have been there for a while. And the new building is mostly young professionals who are new to the area. Uh, and she said that they have a higher demand for their one-bedrooms, and they have a lot of two-bedroom units, so... Um, when I spoke to the property manager at the Baker Chocolate Factory Apartments, which are the ones in that beautiful Pierce Mill Building, they're on the...
They're on the ones on the east side. East side are rental.
Okay.
And then the left side, the west side, is all condos.
And she also said that, that they have a higher demand for one-bedroom units. And the, and the other interesting thing about that property is, I think it's a hundred and thirty-three units, and their parking ratio is zero point seven spaces per unit. And I said, is that adequate? She said, yes, it is, it meets our needs.
More than adequate.
It's more than adequate there, yeah. So, uh, in terms of, you know, uh, impact, whether it would be families with children, it's less likely, even at eighty-eight Wharf where they're larger units. I know my daughter had a friend who lived there with her mother when she was in high school, and she was the only child in the building, I think, you know, and she was a, you know, an older teenager. So, this impact on schools, I think, is probably not nearly as great as it would be.
We always laugh about that, and speaking from East Milton, is that, you know, we just sort of say, oh, well, you know, yes, there wouldn't be any school kids in that new project because I will move there and I don't have any school kids. But somebody with a family, right? Well, for example, the houses on both sides of mine were sold by people who moved to condos, and now I have young families with young babies.
There's a lot of young families in town.
Yeah.
There's a lot of young families in town.
Yes.
Hence the school, elementary school.
The question that they, it might have been the same person, they were asking about schools, but also police, fire, things like that. So is there a, because I, I thought your answer, you had a good, um, response about the schools, like, there's things you can do to mitigate that, like, I mean, when you're building a development that's fifty-five plus, I mean, obviously, that wasn't your answer, but that, that would mitigate, you know, school-aged kids, right? And so...
It was the, well, our, our feeling was that the market for, in that location is probably gonna be a new household, so that would be the young professional without kids.
Yeah, the smaller, so, but my question really is, um, for like the police, fire, and other ancillary services, is there some way that you would, that developers calculate that?
Yes.
Okay. So how do you, because we're gonna get asked that again and again.
They would calculate it based on their impact, their project. So I think it's hard for us to guess.
No, but in an overlay district, if we're saying we want this, something like this, you could probably put a, you know, a guess together.
You can, but the, it changes. So if you say you have a one-bedroom unit versus a two-bedroom unit, it depends on, but there are people that do this.
Yeah, okay.
And usually applicants provide that information.
And if it's a, if it's a, if it's a, I don't wanna say it's a weapon, but it's a sticking point for folks, it would probably be good to have an answer of, well, yeah, it's going to increase this, so the police is gonna probably look to have another policeman on.
Well, that's part of what has to be submitted in the application.
Right.
Is that you have to be doing several narratives. And one of them is talking about what impact, negative or positive, and/or positive, that your project is gonna have.
I get that.
So you're gonna have, when, if you, if you, if we decide, or the town meeting decides to adopt this, then in the zoning are gonna be the requirements for what a developer is gonna have to...
I get it, but you should be able, we should be able to at least say, if we're gonna do an overlay district that's this big, rather than this big or that big, you would think that the, the types of things that could go in, you know, are changing. And so your effect...
Well, as overlay districts go, in my experience, this is pretty small.
I know that. I'm trying to use it as a tool for us to be more successful in answering a question like that.
Yeah, let's think about, one, another example, though. So let's say if you're building like Walcott Woods, right, a three-bedroom, right? So that might be two units in Milton Village. So let's just say, for every one unit in, at Walcott Woods, there's two units in Milton Village. So in fifty-three units there, fifty, or fifty-four, whatever it was, single families, let's say that's a hundred and eight units in Milton Village. Did we, what did we ask of Walcott Woods in terms of police and fire? If you have an over-fifty-five community, that number usually goes higher for calls.
Right.
Um, so versus that a hundred and eight that might be in, in Milton Village, right? One thing I'll say about the, the mixed use, they're required to have a sprinkler system. So in terms of the fire department, you know, you'll have, um, an automatic sprinkler system and fire alarm system that's tied to, uh, the sprinkler system. So the requirements for that, for, in terms of like safety, are, um, you know, should put a lesser pressure in some sense, I guess.
All the things you're saying right now are great answers. It's just, I'm just saying, we should probably...
Yeah, 'cause I, I...
So that when somebody asks, and we can say, well, here are the things that you just said that make me feel better.
Yeah, like, I would like to make people feel better. I know that we do construction management plans when we're in the special permit, but the public, you know, especially the citizens living on High Street, they're saying, they're concerned because they live six feet away from a building that might get torn down and a new building might come up. How are they gonna, you know, survive the construction of that and stay there? And if it's gonna happen over a ten-year period, are they just gonna be living with construction that they can like reach out their kitchen window and touch? Do you know, so, we, we don't normally deal with construction that's like in that tight of quarters.
So here's the thing, um, Denny, is that under the commercial, there's no special permit required. So we couldn't, they don't even have a construction management plan.
Right.
At least under this overlay, we have a, you know how we look at the special permits? We, we can require that construction management plan, and, and we can make it as stringent as it needs to be. But under the commercial, there is no such requirement.
But it'd be great to tell the public, well, here's what you don't have to worry about, is my point. I would like to be able to tell...
See, I like that, because, so again, like, again, like, the way I'm looking at it, if I was living in that area, um, so I live in East Milton. And in East Milton, there is not a lot, I mean, we don't have a ton of cops in this town. You hear them every year saying, we need three or four more, right? And so there is not police sitting in East Milton Square. If you went and asked the bank how many times they've been robbed in the past thirty years, it's probably a staggering number.
I don't know.
He is pointing at you.
Oh, I'm saying, we live there, so, oh, you're not robbing it, are you?
It's either a mask or a car the other day.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good, that's funny. I'm, I'm Italian, I talk with my hands. So anyway.
Bank are you talking about?
So my, my point is, people in a neighborhood that know that something is changing and getting bigger are gonna wanna look to the other boards and selectmen, select board and other folks and say, hey, you're gonna catch up with the needs that this is gonna bring, right? And so they're gonna look for us to say to them, well, you're right, we are gonna need some capacity changes in different services in the town. And if I'm living in that neighborhood, I'd wanna look right at the, the police or the fire or the select board and say, hey, you're gonna make sure you accommodate this so that we don't have issues in our neighborhood now that it's expanding and it's growing and it's growing. And they're gonna need more, um, police to come through or something. So, these are valid questions that people are gonna have.
I can tell you that the, the neighbors have voiced some concerns about having some monitoring of Milton Landing. Um, because there's some activities, let's just say, not desirable activities that have been observed, so, you know, it's, it's not necessarily with development. Sometimes it's with like a dark, quiet section that's become a problem, you know? And sometimes more eyes is beneficial to keep away trouble. Um, uh, trying to make a few notes about...
But a lot of this is redevelopment, the new development is new growth. Sometimes it's just regrowth in different areas and expanding it. We're talking about living with overrides, we're talking about keeping a, how do we keep X amount of police on that force? If we stay stagnant with our tax rate right now, you're not getting more. You're going to get, you're going to increase each year by two and a half percent. How do you do that and wind up having to have more firemen, more police, more to the school? Um, you need that new growth, you need that redevelopment, where is it? This is one of those opportunities that you're bringing in a redevelopment of a building that is underused at the moment. If we talk about, uh, the Swift Hat House and the house next door, it's, it's upgrading what's there, it's using something that's already in place. If you take and use the, uh, the land beside the citizen kiosk, which is three buildings right now, it's, it's three buildings and it's, uh, just under eleven thousand square feet. Um, you're, you're talking about four stories on Adams Street, three stories on High Street, and they fill in and they park their own problem. Um, you're increasing their, their building value by how much? And it's a lot.
Agreed. I mean, I'm sure the, the revenue that's gonna bring is already has been spent.
I mean, taking...
Well, that was one of, when I was running, you know, collecting signatures and all that stuff, the number of people who came up to me and said, you know, we wanna see more commercial development. We can't be supporting all the potential construction of fire stations and new schools on residential...
I'll tell you that eighty-eight Wharf, when Bill, I didn't put this as part of the presentation, but the building eighty-eight Wharf Street, um, is the single largest. They, their tax, um, revenue to the town is, um, makes up the vast majority of the total of the whole district. They, in extra space storage, are about seventy percent of the total, those two properties. So...
Did you get that note, something about extra space storage?
Under the special permit already?
Yeah, that, that hasn't expired?
Yeah, they would... Yeah, they would have to, there's a, there's a question about that, I think, that, but it, the, the point about it is that they, that property is large enough to fall under the Milton Village Central F P U D, and it was already permitted under that to allow those two buildings to be converted. What they permitted is more than what the overlay would allow, to be honest. So they can build, they could still come back and build what was permitted under the original, because that, that P U D allows more building than the one that's being proposed right now, currently by the M P I C.
So, so would that overlay now cover that extra space, so we have three options, or just the special permit and that's it?
Oh, if the overlay got adopted?
Yeah.
Could they come back and amend their special permit to say, we want to take that out and we want to put this in instead, right?
Yeah.
Well, their, their special, they'd have to amend their special permit because they've already started building. They already have seven units on site. They've already have their parking laid out in the back. They already have their commercial piece with extra space storage. So they would have to amend their special permit.
I think when Josh did his build-out analysis of that site, Josh from M A P C, he came up with that this overlay that we're recommending at M I, M P I C would allow less than what the existing special permit allowed under the Milton Village Central F P U D overlay. So my guess is they would come in under their existing special permit because they're allowed to do more.
And we did that on purpose.
Right, we didn't want them to allow to, to be more. Don't forget, that, that P U D, which allowed 88 Wharf, it allows up to 65 feet and six stories. So that is, that wouldn't be appropriate for the things on Adams Street and High Street, that's.
I can't remember what those condos were called.
Which ones?
The.
Oh, I have it.
Where?
At Two Adams.
I sent you folks a lot of backup for when you want some extra reading. And it had, it has it on that, it has it in that backup.
How many units? What are you, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for the, the old permit.
I, I did a summary, I forgot some of my paperwork here, but I did a summary, here we go. It is com, how many units that was, it's 14, but they're big, they're average 1,600 square feet.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And it was, all the residences at Milton Village.
That's what I thought.
Two Adams Street, permitted in 2007, and that mixed-use building is about the same square footage as 36 Central, I think. But anyway, it's, it was permitted as 36,316 square feet.
What is it next?
With a restaurant, two, two commercial spaces. And that, that zoning, that Milton Village Central F P U D has no affordable requirement.
Right.
So 88 Wharf was permitted with no affordable requirement, so 73 units and not, not one was affordable. And the Two Adams Street was, only required a, a payment of $50,000 for that development. So this proposed zoning is for 10%, and if you want to go more than three stories and 35 feet, then you have to do fif, you could do one of several things. One had to do with historic preservation, one has to do with improvements to the public realm, including Milton Landing, and one would be a higher percentage of affordable housing, so 15 to 20%. So you get to go that extra, that fourth floor if the planning board decides that you've done one of those things to a significant enough level.
I just sent it to you.
Oh, thanks.
Actually speaks that, so if, if there is a building and it's over 75 years old, I wanted the, I, I wanted the Historic Commission to be more involved and maybe even have like a requirement that historic preservation be taken into, more than into consideration, to be required or to have the Historic Commission be able to have more veto power depending on the building. If it's over 75 years old, if it's like really the Masonic building.
Can't have veto power, though.
Yeah, I don't, legally, they.
Then I would like to see more historic protections, maybe, because right now it's optional. So if, if, if the, if three developers came in and said, well, we just want to give to the fund and improve the wharf, we're not going to do any more affordable, we're not going to do historic preservation, we're not going to, then, then we're just getting money in a fund and the wharf gets improved, but we're losing historic buildings.
Why wouldn't you just deny the permit?
You can just, we could just deny the permit?
Yeah.
Yes.
It says, it says we give the developer three options, but no, we are steering the developer into the option that we want them to take.
No, there's a historic requirement in the special permit.
Yeah. But I thought there was three options, they could do historic, they could do.
That's for.
The bonus.
For the bonus.
That's a bonus.
Okay.
But the, but the district itself requires historic preservation.
And we might be able to add something into the design standards.
If we got that. But yeah.
But I mean, it's certainly, we talk about.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so that the design standards.
The way I read it.
Have a more historic focus.
Right, but the way I read it, that they were kind of off the hook if they just gave to the funds.
That's only if the planning board allowed them to.
Yeah, only if you wanted them to, then you could say no.
So we could say, well, here's another thing, if there's a building over 75 years old.
It's already protected anyway.
And, well, it only gets, it's only protected by a two-year demolition protection, that's it.
Oh, because we don't have a historic district.
Well, the Historical Commission is interested in pursuing that, but they, select board needs to appoint the committee and go through that process because it's a state process with the Mass Historical Commission.
Should we take a vote to ask the Board of Selectmen to do that? That's something I really strongly favor.
I think we already have, but we certainly can do it.
I don't know who's voting on it, and I don't know if we need to.
Maybe it was M P I C that did it then, okay.
But I mean, if it's just a matter of them appointing a commission to start the discussion, and it's been sitting for a year.
We should put that on the agenda and vote.
Yeah, I'd like to.
We should put that on the next agenda.
Take a more proactive stance as a board, because that seems silly.
Let's do it. Let's do it. I agree. Okay, so basically, I want to understand those options better. So like I said, I have a lot of questions and I want to understand.
But I think that's fully warranted.
Yep.
We should explore all of the things that worries anybody, including the public. And I think, I mean, just, there's one thing in here about the line about the impacts, potential impacts of a development. I've already made my own notes on maybe how we might adjust it, but I think this is all part of the collaboration, right?
Yeah.
That can and should occur around the table.
Yep.
So, I mean, this is, this ended up because you added red lines to it, it picked up all of the red lines that I had made too, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, but the, this, I mean, the sort of this substantive, I didn't do very many substantive changes, the only thing I did was on the affordable housing, I took out a whole pile of stuff.
Okay.
Because it just should say that it gets on the S H I. How it gets there, we don't care.
Yeah.
It's going to change, regulations change, programs change.
Administration's change.
Seriously. So we just want to say, it's on the S H I. However they get there, we don't care.
Yep.
So that all comes out. And then, after all, then the design standards, we had this language that said that, you know, we, and I, I don't want to get into the weeds on this, but it was sort of a thought about the placement of options should be at the end. We would have all the design standards listed, and then at the end, we would say, oh, and by the way, planning board has a right to incorporate other kinds of design standards from time to time, depending.
Right, right.
But we put it at the end, not at the beginning. So, so we would just sort of go through what our design standards would be, and then at the end, depending upon the project or something like that, we might impose other ones.
Oh, that's, that's one thing that might address your concern. We can establish new design guidelines.
Yeah.
Or additional.
I got that from Cohasset.
That's where we might put in something more.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's my thought on it. It says a structure, it would say, yes, these are the design standards, and we would talk about what those would be, and then at the end, we would have this language which kind of says, you know, from time to time, things change, la, 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 we would impose new ones and give us the flexibility to do that.
And could the planning board say, we require historic preservation and we require 15% in order to go up to the fourth floor?
Well, we have that already.
Okay.
But we'll have to just take a look at that.
I mean, we can walk through that document when we, but, but I would.
And you know, and as I said, you know, it's sort of one of those, we all go through these things with sort of like little nits, you know?
Yeah, I know, things jump out at you this week that don't next week.
What we know or what we don't know, and I was like, well, that won't work, you know, that, you can't require the restriction you recorded with the special permit because you won't get the affordable housing restriction until the end. So you should, you know, so, so as I said, it's those sort of little things.
You pick up on those things and I'm picking up on others.
Yeah, exactly. So everybody has, so that's why talking about it around the table is a great idea, to then say, okay, fine, let's take a look and see what makes some sense and.
So why, do you think it would be useful to run through part of this now and then everyone can come back and we can focus on other things at another time?
Well, I don't know whether we want to hear people, you know, I, I don't know whether we want to do that tonight or not, because I don't think everybody's read it.
So, yeah, I mean, I think this is already starting a good conversation, but I would like to just make up my own notes for discussion.
All right.
Yeah, I think.
All right, so what I'd like to suggest is that at our next meeting, we can run through at least each of the things, like the purpose, the allowed uses. I did a comparison, I sent it to you, I think it's useful for you to look at, which is, this was, I did for my own purposes, but this compares the districts.
Oh, yeah.
And you can see the things that, you know, if it's checked, you know, it's allowed, if it's an X, it's, there's no requirement. So for example, if we look at the top of this, I said, under the business district, the approval process is a site plan approval. In the Milton Village Central Ave, so again, that's just 88 Wharf and Two Adams, it's special permit. Central Ave P U D, which is 36 Central and 131 Elliott, special permit, and this would be a special permit. So that's the way you can just kind of look through the chart, the uses, what's allowed and what's not. I mean, the big, I think impediment in, in many ways is that the business district doesn't allow multifamily, right? So that, but if you, you can see that we're recommending, as did the other two overlays, not allowing certain commercial uses, like I said before, gas stations and car, you know, car shops, et cetera. And then the dimensional requirements, there's not many that are in the business district, and there's more in each of these other three districts. And those dimensional are what we're tested in the build-out analysis to see what, how this really controls size. Is it, is it controlling it in a way that people envision that it's controlling it, you know, so limiting the size so it doesn't get overbearing? So that's what was tested, and then, and the, the bonuses are listed here. So incredibly, from, in my mind, is that huge bonuses were allowed for 88 Wharf and Two Adams for quality building design. We put in here, quality building design is a requirement, you don't get a bonus for it. You know, I mean, that, that was an incredible square footage giveaway for, for, for quality building design, and 36 Central got a huge gross square footage bonus for streetscape improvements. Okay? So the, what we're granting bonuses for are significant compared to the existing ones. So I think it's really useful, I sent this email by email to everybody, it would be useful to review it.
Yeah, maybe we could review it and have it up on the screen so the public can see it, and even if we could have handouts for the public, I did get some feedback at our last meeting, that the, that the public doesn't know what we're talking about a lot of times because we have the document that they don't have.
Yeah.
So they're kind of like, so, if we.
Oh, the public that's sitting here?
Yeah, sitting here, and sit, and the public's sitting at home. So if we could put it up on the screen.
I'd love to have a better sized screen, too.
And if we could do handouts of things that we're looking at.
Yeah, it was 50 grand is all they had to pay for a four-story house.
I looked all these up. Lauren provided me with all the special permits for these.
Yes.
So one other question I had, I don't see open space. I know there's not much open space there currently, but I wanted to understand the thinking behind that.
The only one of these that required open space was 88 Wharf, I think.
I don't, given the size.
These are 3,500 square foot lots.
Yeah.
You're not going to get.
Where are you going to do that?
I mean, one.
What you'd like to see is contributions to the open space that's already there, which is, you know.
Right, that's what we're.
Or more street trees.
You know, or.
Trees would be great along the sidewalk, this is what I'm looking for, these ideas.
Well, I mean, yeah, if you look at the, if you look, as I have on Google Earth, you know, today, I mean, there's.
Google it.
I always do that.
Love it.
Because I'm a real estate man, I'm a real estate. So, you know, there's a ton of tarmac.
Right.
Ton of tarmac.
Right, that's what I was saying, the asphalt, the amount of asphalt. The idea, too, is that a fund could be set up for Milton Landing, so you know how there's a fund for affordable housing, there's funds for the trees. The idea would be like, that could, then the select board or Parks Department, I suppose, would decide how that fund is used, but it could be new benches, new trees on the waterfront, maybe it's historic signage, maybe it's district signage, you know, maybe it's.
Improving the, you know, the.
Maybe it's flower pots on all those street lights, or maybe, you know, flower baskets, whatever.
I think there should be some sort of a reward if, if one of the developers wanted to do something, you know, with the corner lots or pocket parks, or actually put space in between some of them so that there's access or, you know, there's, I just would love to see more space in there. I know there is none now, so we can't imagine it, but it would be great, while we're thinking of it. That's why I wanted to hear, because you've been working on this for four years, what your thoughts on that were.
I think.
Well, the way I, actually, when I did the build-out analysis and looked at how one might protect the single families scale-wise, I don't know if you saw these, but it has this sort of lower scale here, and that's where you access parking, but that's open space to the, it's private to the development, but they, the, that's like terrace space, you know? So that's like green roof space or deck space, you know, that patio space, right? And then also on, on this side, again, kind of at the street level here, and then this is a 12-foot setback here, which doesn't exist now.
That's a wonderful feature, like those kind.
Well, you do want to be doing a lot of that anyway because of climate resiliency, so you do, you want to be making sure that you had permeable surfaces for the parking that you had, you know, you had green roofs or blue, you know, the sort of thing, so that you're not, on your lot, you're not sending off the stormwater onto somebody else's. So that's, that's sort of a thing that.
And then this, this allows, you know, this, this from the views out towards the landing and the, and the river, so the.
So does that let the people behind see the water?
Well, yeah, because, well, it'll, if you don't get taller than this, right, because this slope, it continues to slope up, right? So you can look across it, but if you go taller than that, then of course you wouldn't.
Right.
But like, I mean, these, this was done on these parcels, this, this being the citizen's kiosk parcel here, you know, behind these, these are the, the two families are over here, and then this is that medical office building, there's a single family here, and then this is that law office. So there's not a lot of, of it that's, you know, like these single fa, or these two families mostly in this area, look out over the Bank of America building. And when, when M A P C did the analysis and said not likely to be developed, it's because the zoning wouldn't really allow them, you tear down one building to build another one the same size, and now you have to build more parking than you had before. Economically, who would, it doesn't make any sense to do it, that's why they said it's less likely. So the idea was not to make enough, don't give too much that somebody says, oh, yeah, I can tear my building down and do better than what I have now. The idea is, you know, keep those buildings the way they are, but maybe allow new uses in them, like the multifamily, but not allow.
The ZBA permitted that condo, you know, that porterhouse last year on High Street.
Yeah, well, those are all, those are all pre-existing non-conforming two families because they don't conform to the zoning.
21A. Two units over, two, two parking spaces, 35 feet.
Okay, so one of the things that, about the zoning that, you know, that I think that I can definitely run through everyone's understanding of is what's controlling the scale of what can be built. I mean, that's the whole analysis part of it. If other people, if Kathleen, you targeted things that you wanted to, you know, address, Denny, if you want to like send out in advance, like things that you have questions about, I can also be prepared in advance, you know, to have, if we have the answers for those. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a structure and how to move the discussion along.
Should we also start thinking like timeline for this and like a plan of, yeah, so folks know where we're, where we're going?
We don't have that much in our agenda for the next few weeks, do we? We have zoning on the next meeting.
Yeah, Bill was expecting a site plan approval application, which he hasn't received. So it's just the zoning right now.
So we should put it on all of the next agendas, right?
Right. So the, Bill, the deadline to go for the May town meeting would be early December. Christmas.
Yeah, I'm thinking milestones like that, like let's work backwards and say, you know, so, so folks can understand throughout, you know, the next months, when would we have them come in to talk or when should we have?
Or do we have a hearing?
When should they be listening for us?
So right now, the draft of the zoning before Kathleen's comments, so the draft that the MPIC forwarded to us.
Yep.
Is on the town website. So if anybody wants to review that language, plus all the studies, they're on the website. So I think the first thing is it would be useful is for the committee to make sure the, I mean, the board, our board, to make sure that you understand what's in the zoning, right? Because it's hard to, I think, have comment and, and answer questions from the public without making sure we understand what's in it, right? We can do certainly things that are more technical in nature, like the SHI units or, you know, filing, things like that. That's, you know, that's just really more a fix, right? So I think my suggestion is if everybody can try and read through the zoning, maybe again, look through the, you know, the presentation because it explains a lot of the dimensional standards anyway.
And is the presentation on the planning board or on the MPIC's?
MPIC's website, right?
Yes.
Part of the website. Do you want a copy on the planning board part of the website?
It's up to you. I just want the public to know where to look. Either, either way is fine with me.
It's currently on the MPIC Master Plan Implementation Committee portion of the website.
We'll, we'll put it on both.
Both, okay. And the zoning can be on both. The, the draft that the MPIC passed on, our portion of revising it is still going to be a working document, I think, for a little bit, right? So your comments and any others needs to still be a working document. That's what we did internally with MPIC.
The only one that goes on the web is the PDF that you got. The red line and stuff has just gone to you.
Okay. So the word, the word version that you all got is our MPIC working document, which had lots of edits that I never changed to accepted, you know, so that they all showed up unless Bill changed them. There's a lot.
No, no, there's a ton.
So we can start, we can start going.
Start accepting them.
Start accepting them. It won't be such a difficult document to work with.
Yeah, I'm going to do that online.
Because our committee accepted everything that was in that, all right? So.
I need to hear that so that I can get rid of it.
I just wanted anybody in our committee that wanted to have a final look at all those edits before that Monday night's meeting that they had a chance to do it. But that's the official recommendation from our committee.
Since you're talking about putting things on, did the other things that we have over here today, is that stuff on our site, do you know? No?
That?
Yeah.
No.
So can you put those two articles?
Well, I didn't know if it was emailed to us or anything. Is this my only copy? That's all I.
It just came in late, late this afternoon.
Okay.
All right, so do I?
Put that next.
So do, so on the 10th, we're going to focus a lot on the village zoning, okay? Because I think that's the one, I mean, the other two we already have going, right? And you will see when we get to East Milton that our consultant's timeline is a little bit out. So, so maybe we can work on this until we get her ready and started on that. So what do folks think about targeting a May town meeting, which would mean that this would go to the select board at the end of the year?
I definitely think January is, would be impossible.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Didn't the warrant already close for January? I think it did on November 11.
It closes.
No, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we want to do it in January.
No, 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 yeah.
I think, you know, people, we need to get input from people. I don't think that's.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that sounds reasonable, assuming it goes well.
Okay, so I mean, Rich asked for a target and so, okay. Then we'll move on if everyone's ready to move on.
Did we already hear from the public? Do we need to hear from the public?
Does any, did anybody else want to add comment? I know you came to Citizen Speak, did you want to add to your comments, two of you?
Yeah, it's getting late.
This won't be the only opportunity.
Yeah, we'll be.
It's the only opportunity?
No, no. It's not for the poor man.
It will not be.
He's like, what do you mean?
This is hard, just one like this, oh my God, no.
It's October 11.
October 10th is our next meeting?
October 11, we have to get the wording in for.
Oh, no, 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 not this.
If, if we were to do this at our January meeting, we'd have to be done with everything by October 11.
Yeah, which is not possible.
Impossible. So we're, we, we just set a rough target and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
For the May town meeting. But next meeting, we're going to have a meeting like this and we're going to hear it from the public and you're welcome to come, you're welcome to speak.
And my, that, my question about that was directly so you guys could hear what we're thinking so far so that you can plan.
No, I had heard about something else on October 11.
All right, good.
The day we have hit to get on to January.
Yep, and we're not even going to try.
We're not going to do it.
Nope.
All right, so.
It has to be here every day.
Does anybody else want to speak to us about the Milton Village zoning? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to, or back to East Milton. We have, and I know Bill's been, it says September 15th, but Bill did not receive this September 15th, okay? This proposal was received today. Because Bill and I, I've been checking in with Bill about this and he's been checking in with Judy about this, so we all just got this. One of the things that you'll see is they, they can't really get started immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, October 15th is like two weeks from now.
It's true. I guess what the part about, is true. I guess the part I was focused on was that the big first public meeting wouldn't be until the end of November, where we were kind of hoping to get it before then. But yeah, you're right, it's, it is starting October 15th.
Yeah, yeah.
It's coming fast.
Coming fast, it is.
Yes, it's right around the corner.
And then attached to this are the resumes of the staff and references. But I think we talked about before that Kathleen, April, you both know.
We have both worked, I've worked with her on the 40R district in Kingston.
I have come across her a thousand times, just with my work in the state and since, and she's highly capable.
Right, so I think we all agreed that we were comfortable with proceeding with this consultant, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I get, we, if we're comfortable, let's talk about what the, so she's outlined a kickoff She's also suggested a working group.
Yeah.
All right, so what do we think about the composition of a working group? Should we have a member from the planning board, planning staff, neighborhood association, Chamber of Commerce? I'm just trying to.
I mean, who do you normally have, that, that sort of crew?
Well, this was, the discussion about this going back sometime was the select board and the neighbor, I think it was at the neighborhood association too, was suggesting a working group?
Yeah, well, we talked about that a bunch of times. So I guess my question, not to cut any of that off, but so what would, and I'm trying to see it real quick and I'm just seeing this, that working group, what, what are we thinking they will do?
They'll help guide.
Process.
The process. They're not going to be guiding the input.
I mean, I feel strongly that we should reach out to the neighborhood association and have somebody sit on there as a, as a member. I don't know how big this board is going to be for us. I don't know. Is that too close to that process and then we're going to supposed to sift through it and, you know, deliberate on it afterwards? Or, I don't know, should we be a part of it?
Let's say, let's say that the working group idea would be, the whole board can't dedicate.
That's what I mean.
The time that it would take to do that, right?
And we'd have to post it every time.
Yeah, so it's.
No, that wasn't my intention. No, no, I, my question was, should we even have somebody on it? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think we need to make sure that we're, she's staying within the parameters of what we're looking for.
Of what we were looking for, yeah.
What you don't want to see is somebody, which I've just had in, in another town, is a consultant went like totally off the rails. So the, the estimate was 17.
Hopefully it wasn't one of my projects.
It was 17,000 and the bill was 65.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, yeah, yeah, we don't want that to happen.
So we want Kathleen there.
No, no, I'm just saying.
And we want them to stay on target and on plan.
We just volunteered, Judy.
I'm just saying that, you know, you just want to, you know, make sure that, you know, they're not.
No, I, I think that.
Just let them go forever.
That makes a lot of sense.
I would, you know me, I would. I'd be like there till midnight going, okay.
I'd say Kathleen or April, if you guys are willing, one of you two would be great.
So I could possibly do it. I have a little bit of a tricky schedule, so I can't ever meet on Mondays or Tuesdays.
I mean, I, yeah.
Rich might want to do it, this is the neighborhood.
I, I wouldn't mind, I mean, I.
Would you do it?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't mind being a part of it.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
That'd be really good.
Perfect.
All right, maybe, I mean, I'll suggest that maybe somebody from the MPIC, not me, be a part of it as well.
That makes sense.
That would be great.
Because it ties into the, I mean, everybody on our committees is, well, they're not quite as, because some of this is more technical, but they're very much in tune with what this whole process was. So I think that could be beneficial to the working group.
Absolutely.
So we could see whether Katie Dicklitz or Tabor wanted to do it.
That's a great idea.
So there was a guy on the tab from Milton, Matt Zaler, Zaler.
Yeah, he's the one who's going to look at the economics of this, by the way.
Oh, yes, okay. And I just found out he's my new neighbor. Oh, goodness. I'm moving into next to him. But maybe he might want to be on it.
There you go, yeah.
I mean, he sat on the tab, I don't know if he would have time or if the neighborhood would feel it was appropriate, but.
I'm going to be.
Oh, yeah, but I do think somebody from that association should be on, whether the, whoever runs that neighborhood association or whenever they decide.
Oh, definitely.
They have a new, then they just, I just got an email.
Do they announce somebody new?
Um, you know, looking for, I mean, just sort of announcing their, like paying the dues and stuff like that. Of course, I'm not a member because.
10 bucks?
No, I just, I don't think it's appropriate.
Oh, I'm, I, I don't think I am anymore, it's been years.
And before, when I was on the, you know, when I was on the ZBA, I didn't think it was appropriate.
Yeah, I've stayed away.
10 bucks to join the neighborhood association? Yeah, that's pretty cheap.
It is. I haven't, since being on here, I haven't joined or went back at all.
I, I do think, because it is a business district, that the chamber should be offered an opportunity as well.
Makes sense.
Yeah, somebody representing the business community, that's probably the most likely.
Yep.
I mean, they can figure out how they want to find some, pick somebody, but.
Makes a lot of sense.
And Bill, I think, you know, needs to be the.
Yeah, so Stephen Rhines is the president.
Or the assistant town planner when she starts.
Susan Harvey, Christine Morrow, Joe O'Neill, Mike Mahalchuk. He's a member of the, isn't he a member of the chamber? No.
He's then the Rotary.
Rotary.
Jessica Costantino, Andy Demato, Jerry Tugert, Peter Dunn, Bob Kelly, Joe Riordan, and Kate Tenford.
So if they wanted to get started by the.
By October 15th, they want this set up.
They want staff, staff and officials as appropriate, so.
Should we ask Judy how many people she thinks we should be shooting for? Does she have a number?
Just to steer the project. This isn't, no, this is to steer it, not to.
Right.
You know, sort of.
A working group to steer.
Not to make, you know, kind of determinations, right? It's just to steer the work.
Sure.
So it seems to me you don't need a huge group.
Yeah.
It sounds like we need five at least.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, does she have a magic number or should we just suggest?
I think we could suggest that composition and see what she says.
So what do we have, MPIC, planning board?
Also suggest select board.
Neighborhood.
Give them an option.
That's right, select board.
If you have Katie, you've got two for one.
Chamber, neighborhood association.
Neighborhood, planning board, MPIC.
Chamber.
Chamber, select board.
Yeah, five, there you go.
I just said maybe select board.
Did you say Bill?
Did you say Amber?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
So that's five.
That's five. That's probably good.
I don't think anything bigger than that.
No.
Yeah, it's probably good.
Did you say and Bill too?
Yeah.
Is that five? Oh, that's five, okay. Six.
Oh, Bill is six.
Bill is six.
We don't know if a select board member will have time.
We don't know if they're going to, we want to extend an option.
I definitely invite them.
Right. So.
You're not in enough committees, we have to give you another one.
I know, Bill.
So.
Well, this steering will be during the day, I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Because this.
Yes.
Will Rich have time or?
Oh, yeah.
You have time during the day.
The 7th of October.
All right, so.
Chamber, Chamber meets next week. I can ask them to put this on their agenda and choose a person.
So Kathleen just had a good idea.
I suggested to ease up on Bill would be to have the new assistant town planner be the person who sits on that working group in the beginning.
She starts on the 7th.
They, maybe they overlap for a little bit while she gets up to speed because, yeah, but other than that, yeah. I mean, that's the way, like, Lauren did.
I was just thinking that, you know, poor Bill's got like a zillion things and so, and this would be a way to integrate somebody, you know, throw her into it.
From the beginning, yeah.
Yeah, and she lives in Dorchester, so, you know.
And she's familiar with planning.
Yeah.
She's not.
She's not.
Okay. So, so Bill, do you want to do the outreach to the parties that we suggested? It looks like sometime that it says to be by October 15th, so I'm guessing in the next couple of weeks it would have to be available. So maybe the committee or the group is not going to be ready for that. Maybe it's just, maybe just you to start with by the 15th and then maybe by the 31st it can be the bigger group. Because I'm assuming the groups are going to have to talk amongst themselves. All right. So then, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I got ahead of you. So the planning board would just go to the first and second and third public meeting? Should we, is that right? But then the other pieces we wouldn't?
Yes.
That's my thought, right. There's a project planning meeting. It says meet with planning board and town staff there.
Okay, that would January.
Right now, that first public meeting is tentatively scheduled for November 21st.
The one that says by November 30th.
Okay.
Yes.
So that would be good news to, or good information to get out to folks.
Okay.
As soon as the working group is formed.
Okay.
But I'm telling you, it's.
That's the date she and you have talked about.
Yes.
Got it. Now, this, initially we thought $15,000 for the work. Her proposal is 17.5 plus an estimate of $2,000 for reimbursable expenses. And it does not include any graphic, so no maps or renderings or schematics. Now, Bill and I talked about this just before the meeting and he was going to see if he could reach her. Did you have a chance to talk to her?
No.
No. So we're going to try and find out what she thinks the cost of those would be. And Bill was going to try and talk to DPW and see what GIS could produce. And it might be that we come back and talk about additional funds. But otherwise, I'd like to have, we will be using, Bill and I were looking at this and confirming that the town meeting budget, you know, was for $50,000 for planning studies for the planning board. So that we would be using those funds for this work. So if everyone's in agreement, I'll take a motion to authorize Bill to enter into this agreement using those funds.
My move that we appropriate, that we agree to authorize Mr. Clark to execute a contract with Barrett Planning Group LLC for $17,500 plus reasonable out-of-pocket expenses, up to a max of $2,000.
Based upon this proposal?
Based upon the proposal dated September 15, 2019, set funds to be from the $50,000 set aside for planning board studies.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bill, any?
This is a very reasonable fee.
My only discussion point is September 15th. That's when she was supposed to have it for me the first time.
I know, that's why I said that's not when you got it. I know that.
I know, but it's just a case of.
Because the document.
I've known Judy a long time. I'm not surprised.
I haven't been sitting on this.
But the document itself, yeah, it's all the way through, yeah. All right.
Can I just say that November 21st would have ordinarily been, I think, a planning board meeting? So that.
We'll have to. We'll reschedule the planning board if that's necessary, right?
Because aren't we the first and?
No, that's the third.
The third?
It's the third.
Or the second and fourth.
His Thanksgiving.
His Thanksgiving. We'll need to address that anyway when we get there.
The 14th is the, is the normally scheduled meeting.
Okay, so.
21st.
All right, so then, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? No, unanimous.
So can I ask a question? So if we go with this and once this, you know, if the dates change, whatever, will we be able to put something in outline, like this up online so folks know what we're doing, what the plan is?
She will come, she will put together the first set of stuff for this.
Fantastic.
But we won't be putting this online.
Oh, no, I didn't think so. No. And what I meant earlier was in our doc, docs.
Oh.
Yeah. I was talking about electronic.
Our internal docs.
Not the public.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we, this, we don't have to put this online necessarily. I don't know if it adds any value, but this is a public document, so if anybody wanted it, they could just request.
So the, but what we could, I think, do is maybe put an announcement on the town website that the, that the town's engaging consultant to begin community outreach for planning in East Milton, because people have been waiting for it.
Right.
And I think it would be nice to announce that we've gotten.
And we can provide a link to her website, because really, I mean, her cover letter says she's highly respected throughout New England, and that's absolutely true.
Agreed.
Yeah, she's highly, highly experienced and skilled, and I think that that would make people feel good about the process.
Yeah, right.
She's a great choice.
Okay, so then lastly, Bill, you had some, actually, Denny.
Actually, I did, yeah. So Bill and I went.
Yeah, you did that, right?
Yeah, so I, yeah, so I gave you all the notes, but I'll just go over them really quickly. So the Polkie developers representative, Mike Rosati, was there. Steve Ives, which I just learned about, is a consultant that checks construction sites in town for the Conservation Commission. And I just, I happened to be at a garden club meeting with Judith Daryl Kemp, and I mentioned I was going on a site walk tomorrow, and she said, oh, we would be so interested. So anyways, we had a guest. So, and then the neighborhood representative, Bob Sweeney, who's been very active on that project from the beginning. So it was the four of us. So we went to the first site, which you may all be familiar with, right near the Mulligan Wall. So, so for our, you remember this map, but Rich and Kathleen, this was before your time, but.
Oh, yeah, we've seen that.
I call it the Mulligan Wall, but he no longer lives there. He's actually passed away. But he had a stone wall and Cheryl and I are very thoughtful about this landscape right beside it, because we, we were told that the existing vegetation would remain for 30 feet from the wall to the berm, and it all came down. And so it was like this two years ago. And it was all vegetated. And then, six months later, I went out and I looked and it had been clear cut right up to the wall. And then, so we, I was very concerned about this. And then, last May, I went and they had put the berm right up to the wall. So this is what happens when you give them an inch, they take a mile. So Cheryl and I were very focused. You can't really see it, but there's a couple of little sprigs, like they had planted little things, but they weren't living.
Oh, I think we saw that in some other pictures.
Different view, yeah. So that was in May, since you've been here. So this, so anyway, we've been, there's some more pictures of the berm.
Oh, really isn't, right.
Yeah, so this was earlier, so that's confusing. But anyway, this is it in September, just last week. So they put some grass on it and there's a couple little shrubs growing, but when you, so the first, so the upshot is, my bullets are, the first 30 feet needs to be planted. It had never been planted. And then there's a gap, and that's where eight or so died. Those need to be replanted. We need to remove the invasive, invasive species along with, all that land was cleared. Invasive species grew because they didn't plant anything. But the good news is they should be able to be pulled right out. That's where my gardener friend, Mary, knows, that if you pull them out quickly, it should only take 20 minutes. But if they let it go in six months, it's going to be a disaster. So, and then the guy from the conservation came up with a new thing. He thought, slow release fertilizer on the berm to encourage the native species. So I put that as a bullet point. And I asked the developer. And then at spot two, let's see if I can get to spot two. This is all of spot one. So I really showed you everything. Lots of grass, grass, grass. I don't know why I gave you so many. Then the other spot was this, where they did move the pile for me. Remember the pile was right up on the tree line, right in the drip line, which we can't have, because it's, because, so, so I, so I'm.
Did they make, I'm sorry, intrigued. Did they move that after you mentioned it to Reed Blue when he was here on the affordable thing?
They did. So this was all cleared out. They did. They put a path right in here. But this is the drip line. Everything under the tree, so that, so they need to move it a little bit more. And they need to aerate this ground, because it's just packed down. The tree can't breathe and it needs water. So, so I asked for that. And then.
Were they receptive when you asked them to do these things?
So unfortunately, Mike Rosati said that he was unaware of every single thing, every one of these items that.
How could that be, though? When Reed was right here and he heard it?
He heard parts of it.
He heard the thing about the tree and moving that big pile back, too.
So that's the part I think we talked about with Reed.
Right. Reed, Reed responded to what we talked about.
That night, yeah.
And then, but on May, I went and I watched the tape. I think it was May 23rd. Mike, I'm sorry, Bill had said he went and he met with Mike Rosati and he walked it and he talked it. But Mike Rosati had absolutely no memory of any single one of these issues.
So Bill, is it that your recollection that you had a conversation with him? So he's saying he didn't have the conversation to Denny? And you're saying he did have it?
He did.
All right.
He's heard these before.
So anyways, so then I went to spot three, and it's where the three lights are. So again, you know, I said we're receiving feedback from the community that the lights are too tall, too bright, and causing light pollution into the DCR property. And they were supposed to be dark sky compliant with the cap on the top. And I asked for a shield on the DCR side.
We did talk to Reed about that as well, right?
No, that was more recent. That came up this summer.
Somebody we talked to about it, though.
I don't remember.
No, we talked about that with Nick Corbren over his.
But Denny brought it up before.
I did bring it up this summer. I don't know what date.
I think we said we would, we would go back to them.
Oh, okay.
Mike sent, Mike sent Mark a note earlier, said, Mark, the planning board is questioning as to whether the lights are dark sky compliant. They feel that the lights are too bright, especially at Unquity Road. They would like shields placed in the rear of the lights in the Unquity Road, Road Row, and the top shield on all the lights. Please advise. So Mark responded and he said, do they make shields? We proposed our typical beautiful acorn-style lights with black cap that directs the light downward, and the planning board rejected them and required that we use these specific lights that were the town standard, which had no top caps. The exact spec came from the town, and they were the same lights that are installed in another single home development, and that would be Fletcher Steel. I actually wrote to him and said, the cap is in the top, not inside the globe, not outside of the globe. And that he needed to put the shield inside the globe so it doesn't go into the woods.
It's got a cut sheet. These cut sheets always say if it's dark sky compliant. We should be able to figure that out pretty quick.
And we did not put into the special permit that they had to be dark sky compliant.
Well, that was a mad question. Aren't all these things written down?
That one is not in.
Ask Diddy here.
The rules and regulations that we are going to be talking about.
Well, that will resolve that.
Has the fact that they're going to be dark, international, dark sky compliant.
I do think that we should have a boilerplate special permit that has every little thing in there.
Right.
And you take the things out that don't apply, and you add a little bit of text of things that do apply, but then you're not forgetting some things on one thing, some things on another.
Well, that way, it's not.
We're suggesting this a couple times. We haven't, we haven't gotten it.
Well, you know, yeah, somebody mentioned that to me, I think, when I was running and said, you know, I mean, I think I was in town hall for a ZBA thing or something. They said, you know, we could have a clearer way to draft the special permit, so that somebody reading it for enforcement would say, okay, yeah, page seven, it's going to have like boom, 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 all the bullets.
Joe Prandak.
Yeah, we've heard him say that.
From the people trying to enforce.
Agreed.
So.
So, you know, the way, in practice, a lot of times, the applicant's attorney has drafted a special permit. And the applicant's attorneys have sometimes been the same attorney and they use the same format. But when doing Walcott Woods, for example, I inquired about having a different structure.
Yeah.
But I do think it's, it's definitely worth our discussion, or looking into, because I know that I, the classes that I took with the.
Citizen Training Planning Collaborative.
They have one and that deals with special permit. And it has a sample model in the back.
Yeah.
It's just not the kind of format we've used really here before. But it makes total sense to have something that's easy for the enforcement officer to follow, no doubt.
And even for.
For all of us, yeah.
Making sure we're getting every bullet point and for staff to dress.
So we learn from, we learn from one to one.
There's a bunch of great samples that I've, that I've been using.
And as a great aside, there is a Citizen Training Planning Collaborative class on special permits November.
I think it's the 6th.
Thank you. And it's local.
I have to double check that.
Where is it?
And it's local.
He sent it, he sent us an email on it.
The really, I find the classes.
Norwood.
Are taught by very.
Yeah, here it is. He sent the message on the 12th.
People.
Is he like, the one that was at Holy Cross?
Yeah, the same kind of thing.
This is on November 6th.
You went to one.
At Norwood Police Fire Station on, on the Haddon Street at 7:00.
So, back to this, I guess, Denny, did you have more points? Because otherwise I have a suggestion.
So I, so we want a dark sky compliant cap, I guess, at the top, put a shield on the DCR, and adjust the sensor so that it's not coming on as, as early. Or like if it's a little bit foggy, it doesn't have to be like this big light. It's just, it's oversensitive now?
That's an actually easy, easy one for them to fix.
Yeah, so we would like that. And I think Bill mentioned on site, I think it might have been Bill, said use less lumens.
Yeah.
So it's not as bright.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They can do that, too.
So I put all these, so I just wanted to see if everybody agreed with me. And then Bill can go back to Mike and say, did you do everything? And if not, what's your explanation? Because all five of my planning board members want this done.
So I would also suggest giving it to Joe Prandak and saying, we don't want any more certificates of occupancies issued until these are addressed.
All right.
Yeah, I'm totally supportive.
Streetlight shall be the type and in the location shown on the site plan. Installation shall meet all applicable specifications and requirements of Eversource. And.
That's in our.
I'll get it.
That was funny.
Two times, they're.
I'll trade it. I'll trade it.
Or actually, it's our desire, it's our desire not to have special, or certificates. We can't direct him to do that. But it's also.
They're going to be coming before us again. And I said.
For what?
I don't know. Right? I was assuming they would be coming before us and they would want to. They were really, they were really responsive that time that I asked them to move the pile.
I really felt like they were pretty responsive through the whole process.
Generally, yeah.
Everything that we asked, they did.
I mean, he looked me straight in the eye, item after item after item. He looked me in the eye and he said, this is the first time I'm hearing this. He was just shaking his head.
Get it to him in writing. With the board endorsement. So, thank you for doing that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I do have to say, this makes me really anxious about the Canton Ave project.
Yeah, what else?
Is that Walcott Woods?
Yes, I'm worried about Walcott Woods. I'm worried about the lights we approved. I would love to get into them before.
Is it the same light that they used at Woodmere? Do you remember?
Yes.
I'm 99% sure that says dark sky compliant in that permit.
I think it does say dark sky compliant, but now I'm worried about the shield on the Blue Hills side.
Oh.
Same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Are you talking about the permit for Milton Woods?
No, for Carberry.
Yeah.
Carberry, yeah.
But dark sky is only the top, right?
I'm afraid dark sky is only the top.
Yeah, it's only the spillover.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So the shield on a side, like a house side shield or something like that, that's different.
Yeah, just to protect the Blue Hills wildlife.
If that's not in there.
Well, I think.
And even the other.
The occupant, even, can they do some kind of like occupancy sensing on those? I know like the occupancy sensing is almost standard on fixtures now.
On a street light?
That's what I don't know, on a street light. But like in parking garages, where it's, they turn on when.
When there's somebody there.
Everything but the basement of this building is on.
But I mean, even for, like a parking garage, it's a vehicle or a person.
Right.
Triggers it.
They ramp up.
So it seems to me a street light should fall into that same category.
It can, because we do it at the, we do it at our schools.
Yeah.
Parking lots.
So.
They're, they're ramped down, but as you start to use them, they ramp up.
Yeah, well, they definitely wouldn't be off.
Yeah.
But it would be lower. And then when there's activity, they would rise back up. And, you know, there's energy efficiency to that, too.
Well, there's a whole article in The Times the other day about, about lights and, you know, spot, you know, lights that, motion lights, sensor lights, all that sort of stuff, LEDs.
They can be tied to one down the street more than when that trips, that one comes on.
And they can definitely have the sensor addressed to the, you know, the, whatever the clock is for the daylight.
Well, if we know what's in there, we can always look at the cut sheet. It'll tell you what can be bought for that piece of equipment. It'll tell you the difference.
And the other good thing about the Carberry lights, I know they're, they're not that tall. They're not as tall as the ones at this Unquity Road entrance. So that's, that's better for the environment.
Was that their request or our request?
Carberry wanted to go with lower lights, shorter lights. They wanted to go shorter lights.
I remember the discussion. I couldn't remember who it started.
But then I, I agree with it.
Shorter ones meaning you need space closer together, because you're not having the distribution. But what it also means is that you're not getting as much out of each one, which is, to your point, is better, right?
Yeah.
So if you have a taller one that's got to cover more area, it's going to have more lumens coming out.
That came up at Bent's, too, when they were talking about the placement of their lighting.
This, this does not say.
Dark sky compliant.
See, this is good. We're learning from our experience.
It doesn't say dark, dark sky compliant, but I just won't buy it. But they're.
Is there anything we can do about that?
Come on. Oops. Street lighting.
Carberry doesn't say that.
Streetlights as shown on the lighting plan to be installed at a height of 12.5. Two and a half foot units on top of 10-foot poles.
Do we specify the type?
We did, but it's on the plan and this is the document.
I was going to say, I think the plan has a note that says.
Yes. In finding the foregoing measures to be adequate, the planning board further deems them to be desirable and appropriate and deserving of the requested waivers, which are commonly granted. Because we usually say that the poles are taller. In this case, they ask for shorter.
But I want to get a call into him. I'm not kidding. I'll call him, because I want those shields for the Blue Hills and for the neighbors on Carberry Lane, because it's unnecessary.
Carberry Lane, though, the road's going to be probably far enough away. But it's, it's worth asking.
Because, I mean, there's, there's probably wildlife between there and Carberry Lane.
Well, it makes sense. Don't spill life.
We have the photometric plan. I don't remember much spill.
I don't either.
Let's double check the photometric plan. But if you want to call him and voice your concern about it.
Do you have his number? I don't know if I have it.
Bill must have it, right?
Well, Bill, can you get me?
Application, I'm sure.
Jack, or maybe I have it.
Yeah, he's emailed.
Oh, yeah, that's true. He has.
Accidentally.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
I forgot about that, Rich.
That was funny.
All right. So if there's no other business?
I'd make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.